Okay, it is six oh one P M on February fourteenth twenty twenty four. We're calling this meeting to session. We're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just. Now, a moment of silence as we consider those who've called in for us. Thank you. Okay, roll call please.
Yep, um, so roll call, uh trustee altar is absent, trustee.
They may be here, they may just be late.
Yep.
They never said they were.
Yeah.
Trustee Sarr.
Here.
Trustee Shadig.
Here.
Trustee Warren, here.
Yeah.
And deputy mayor Ray.
Here.
And mayor Alan.
I am present. So we have two public hearings scheduled. Uh, the first one, we uh, do I need, I need a motion to open? The public hearing regarding proposed local law one of twenty twenty four, local law amendment of the village of Housick Falls zoning map. Someone like to make the motion? Dan, I need a second.
Second.
All right, and the public hearing is officially open. Um, as we discussed, uh, last meeting, we have the tentative, uh, proposed law, uh, available for review. This is, uh, this would change, uh, zoning in a particular location, uh, to be something that in my mind is more amenable and sensible for what the intention was in that area. Uh, and this would make the one adjustment. Uh, Stewart's person, hey Kevin. Uh, was going to be here, he said he may be a few minutes late, so we'll leave the public hearing open. That being said, does anyone here, uh, want to speak on the proposed local law regarding the zoning amendments? Yes?
So I'm neighboring the house.
Okay.
And so like, I mean, honestly, for me, like that news was devastating. Like, like living directly next to the gas station is just gonna tank my property value. Sorry, also, my name is Sam Passapane.
Hi Sam.
I'm a resident of the town, I own one very great church. I'm one of the, I'm the reason, I'm responsible for the benches in town. So I'm also.
For the what?
For the benches.
She made the, I feel like benches for the.
Oh, oh, okay.
Um, which is like, like this is like, I moved to this town, not in this area. And like, it's, it's a really big risk just moving and buying homes, especially an old home. It's the purpleish Victorian. And but like, a risk I didn't take was buying like a house with a neighbor that was owned commercially. And so I just, and like, it just, like, I put so much time and money into my house and then like, like, it's just like, oh, you get to have a gas station next door. And like, my deck's gonna look at it. And the pumps are like, I looked at the map forty, forty-five feet away from my, my, my property line. And like, is there music gonna be playing at this type of gas station? Like, do I have to listen to that? And it's going to flood my backyard, which is like kinda nice and quiet at night. And then it just like pollution and noise and litter. Like, I already got Stewart's litter, but it's just in the front yard, but like, it's gonna be, it's gonna be right there. And I, I, there's like a bunch of studies done on just like the impact of property values. And like, um, one study was like houses within five hundred feet of the gas station, the property values are thirty percent lower. And so like, if my property value does drop thirty percent, it's gonna be worth less than what I bought it for. And that was like early two thousand nineteen. And, um, it just, it's not just my house, like I checked like the radius. I counted like at least like thirty-six homes that were within that radius. So it's just like Church Street of Reading has a lot of light, honestly. And it's like, I, I thought like we were moving forward to like make the town better. And I don't know how like the gas station's gonna help people in that neighborhood. Cause it's a neighborhood, you know? There, there's a bacon McDonald's, you know, that's not converting its property value. Or like lick the ground with, um, cancer causing substances. So, um, I guess that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
The last meeting we had, when the guy was, some stewards was here, and we were talking about this. And that was one of the concerns, like the, the lights, obviously, like what even, you know? So my understanding is, um, from, then that was actually your house was the one, without even knowing he was the one I was thinking about. You're gonna have suddenly floodlights and all this other kinda stuff that, you know? What is Stewart's gonna do to abate that problem, you know?
Honestly, nothing.
Well, I, so I was told, and I, again, this is just what I, what I had heard. This is not, um, anything official that Stewart's is more so than other businesses willing to work with neighbors to do whatever they gotta buy tall harbor lights to block it, or whatever they gotta do. Um, that was my understanding. There would certainly be more of a conversation with them, but your concern is valid.
Yeah, there is a, there is a fence that goes from.
Yeah, so it's a six foot tall fence, which like, you know, I mean, I have a deck, so what is a deck like to get off the ground? It's kind of like, it does not, it might prevent some litter from blowing in like a little bit, but.
Is there, is, sorry.
Not clear.
Is there, is there stuff in our zoning laws that can, um, sort of guide Stewart's and guide us in terms of how the lights can go? And the sound during the day or at night? Are those things we can look at, look for in our zoning laws that will guide those?
I mean, there are rules about that within our, our code.
Well, there's rules and I think the, uh, the planning board, as they review it, for the site planning review can request, whatever it may take. They have to take a look at the neighbors to try and, you know, rectify some of the issues. Obviously, they're not gonna be able to rectify all of them, but, you know, so it's a discussion that is within the scope of what they do.
Yeah.
As I mentioned the last meeting, where they're putting the road, you know, is pretty close to her house, or I think it's.
I think this is her house right down here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we know what, is it gonna be a twenty-four hours, Stewart? So do we have to say in that?
There isn't, I don't think there's any such thing as a twenty-four hour.
Yeah, sure.
No, it's usually till eleven.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Close at eleven.
But are there lights always on? Like, and like, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just like, so like also during the summer, do I need to keep my windows closed?
I don't know. No, no.
I don't think they have music.
Yeah.
And I do know they, they dim the lights significantly at night, cause I, I probably use my credit card to get gas and it's like,
Yes, yeah.
Barely see it. So they, and that's probably a neighbor consideration, right?
I guess if I was Sam too, then I'd be a little concerned that the dumpster is around, almost under property line as well, but.
It is, it's just like, why can't it go on the side where it fits against the road?
Well, it could go, it could go down on the other side by music stream, but.
It misses.
That's just things that the, if it's, if it's approved, that the zoning board can look at. Screening setbacks, that kinda thing.
The buffer, right, yeah.
And I think your state has to approve the, the curb cut for, on Church Street as well. I don't know whether they've done that or not.
I just think we have to be really, really careful about what we allow and what, you know, we have to be very specific. I know with Cumberland Farms, I mean, I didn't do anything horrible, but they were gonna make that side area a really nice park and it never happened. So we need to make sure that this works in the way we want it to.
I'm trying to find the village meeting.
That's it, so just go down there and have a seat.
You're at the right place.
Yep, yep.
Um, so yeah, so I think we have to, we have to, you know, be on top of that and promise that, you know, the neighbor, and speak to, speak to the neighbors.
You said there's thirty-six in an area, I don't, I don't know what area that is, I don't know. Yep.
Yeah. So it's.
I came in like, so I didn't hear that whole thing?
Yeah, it's, I mean, so I guess it depends where you start the radius, but like, it's like, it's a lot of moments. I know, like, a lot of people, uh, rents, but like, I'm also just like, I, I took a house that was a two family, made it back into single family. I'm trying to make things better. And then it's just like, what?
Is, is it possible for, um, the fellow who was here from Stewart's?
He is supposed to be coming, so.
Okay, did we request that he meet with you to discuss possibly? I, Stewart's situates itself in villages, they like being within law, you, you know, and that's kinda their, their modus operandi.
Hmm, sure.
So let him stay in the village, exactly.
Right, and, and so that, to answer your question why they're not going out to McDonald's, that's part of it.
Alright, so that's why.
Yeah, but also.
I think, I think they can be very clear with Stewart's saying, we know that certain neighbors that we're gonna take care of, we want, I mean, we, we want, I mean, Samantha's right, we're trying to fix up the village, we're trying to bring it up, we're trying to, you know, encouraging people to do exactly what she did, move in, make it two family to one family, all that stuff. So we wanna protect those people. And I think we need to just be aware of that and think about it through this whole process.
Well, I'd like, I, I'd like to, when the Stewart's guy gets here, to request that he or whoever handles community, whatever, meet with you to see what solutions are available. Stewart's must have a lot of experience in this department. They build in the middle of villages and cities everywhere with neighbors. They, and my understanding is that they, they far more so than companies that are owned by, you know, massive, you know, financial holding firms or whatever. Stewart's really does try, and I'm not, I'm not sticking up for Stewart's here, I'm just telling you what I prefer.
No, I, I mean, I know they're a lot better than Cumberland Farms.
Cumberland Farms, yeah.
It's like just like litter donating to towns.
Not a good idea.
They're community oriented, and they really are.
Yeah.
And just for the purposes of, of what we're doing here tonight, and I'm, in no way am I poo-pooing anything you're saying, these are good concerns, we need to hear these. Um, for tonight, we're just discussing the possibility of approving a local law that would amend the zoning map. That doesn't, not the immediate, like it has to, it happens and Stewart's is here. There's a lot more policy and procedures I have to go through, planning, likely zoning as well.
Yeah.
Um, for any things that have to be done differently.
And all meetings are open as well.
Right, we're not the final step.
Right, so this is just one step, but it's, it's good for us to hear that and it sounds like we wanna advocate on behalf of your concerns with Stewart's. Um, I'm, I'm content to leave this open for a while, and when he gets here, we can kinda circle back to that, if that's alright, if you're gonna be here for a while.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, based on the fact that it was published for seven or posted for seven, I think we should over, leave it open as long as we possibly can.
Yeah, yeah, and. Yeah, and we did, we did it right, we posted it right, we put it in the paper and so on and so forth.
Oh, I understand that.
It's just that when we heard today about the letter saying it was seven, so I expect other people will probably be here at seven
Yeah.
or seven fifteen when they figure out they're on the spot. Um, thank you, Sam, I didn't catch your last name.
It's Passapane.
Thank you. Um, does anyone else wanna speak regarding, uh, this proposed local law? Okay, we'll leave the public hearing open and move on to our next public hearing, which is actually, uh, regarding a proposed local law, number two, twenty twenty four. This would be a local law creating alternate member positions on the village planning board and zoning board of appeals. We introduce this in a special meeting, and I have the proposed local law, I think, up here. Yes. And it's a pretty basic, simple one, it's just doing exactly what it says it would do.
I'm.
Um, before I go further, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Need a second?
Second.
All right, everybody, we'll give it to Dan, cause he was loud. Um, and, um, does anyone here want to speak regarding this public hearing? Regarding this proposed local law, which is up on the screen.
There's no specific number of how many alternates?
Um.
Up to, up to.
So that exceed two per board?
Okay.
Yep.
And the, the alternates are only there if, if a member is conflicted, correct?
Or absent.
Or absent.
Or absent.
Yes.
No, they can be there unless in like a regular person, but they don't get paid unless they're.
But they're.
Right.
They're sorta ex officio then, they just, they're just, they don't vote unless.
Yeah. Right, correct.
Yeah, in fact, um, when this was crafted, we were specific about it, they wanna go and just be there to watch and not be a paid member, and then that's, you know,
Like in dirt.
Yeah.
with a responsible vote. Yeah, they can just be a person present.
Do they get paid if they then have to fill in?
Oh, yeah, they would be paid as a non-member.
They only, they only get paid when they sort of actually serve.
You don't think it was?
I think that they're, I think that there was a statement on it, but I don't know if there was ever an amendment paid, so I don't know what the end decision was.
Can zoning board members or planning board members serve if they haven't done the, the classes or certification for it?
Yeah, they have a year to do, get certified, and then continue their trainings.
So that's just it for this, uh, proposed local law. Um, unfortunately, I forgot to get a resolution ready for, um, approving this local law should we want to, so if it's alright with you guys, I'd like to wait until either a special meeting or, uh, the next regular meeting to, uh, approve this, if that's assuming what we wanna do.
So we have a, say, if we have a big project coming up, like Stewart's coming up, and we have half the board is all new, the village can have counsel present at the, to guide them in the process.
Ideally.
Cause we don't, we don't typ, we don't typically have counsel for our zoning and planning meetings.
Yeah, I would.
We should, we're supposed to, we go.
I think that's, I think we're trying to change that with our kind of restructuring idea, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what is the final decision on F the, the, did we change for the resolution?
Um. Oh, you're right, this was not the right. I wonder if I grabbed the wrong one?
I don't know if it was changed or.
I don't know, maybe it wasn't changed.
I think that there was discussion on it, but I don't know what the final, I think it was discussed maybe with the meeting, I don't know what the final.
Guys, we discussed, I thought we had made this change, but obviously we had not.
We did.
To what?
Did we make such?
To pay the alternates?
Yeah, we are going to pay them.
I thought we had changed that.
When they, the decision, but was it formally changed in a document?
Oh, that.
I, that I don't have.
I don't think it, I don't think it was formally changed in the document.
So how do we go about?
Unless you did it and I didn't know.
I don't think so.
I would just need to know what the final determination is and I'll change it for the resolution.
Um, also members who serve in these boards, um.
They're gonna get paid.
Would be.
If they're an active, yes, an active.
Yes, yes. Would be paid per meeting, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As, as, whatever, do you want it to be open, like whatever fee is set forth?
Yeah.
Yes.
For the regular amount.
Yes.
I usually don't put the fee actually in it, I put it by resolution or motion of the board, so that at some point in time you wanna change it.
As provided board, yeah.
You don't have to go back and change the local law, you just make a motion.
Yes, right.
Okay, yep.
So whatever we have this next meeting, can we have that amendment ready?
Yep.
We'll do it there for, do we don't need to do another public hearing on that, right?
No, cause it was discussed previously at the, I believe it was discussed when it was introduced.
Yeah.
We definitely talked.
Yeah, we did.
Sure.
Yes, okay. Add it to my to-do list. All right. Um, so any other things to discuss about this? We'll leave the public hearing open a while for a little longer, in case anybody shows up with more confusion. Um, hearing that we are moving on, I am going to, uh, move on to the announcements section. First off, a quick one, uh, the village elections will be on March nineteenth, twenty twenty four, from noon to nine P M at the Amport Municipal Building. Um, clearly, so remind me again, is tomorrow's the deadline for?
Nope, uh, Friday's the deadline for the, these certificates of acceptance.
Okay.
That you guys just filled out for me.
And my, and then petitions are due?
Petitions were due Thursday, the thirteenth, so that was yesterday.
And they're already in.
So I have them on my desk.
Yep. Um, and then once that, that part is done on Friday, then we'll be able to announce who's on the ballot.
Yeah, Denise is gonna honorize them and then they'll be all set to go.
Okay. All right. All right. Um, great, um, Jeff, McCreevy.
I'm male, it's Brett, but if you wanna just.
You are here to speak to the board about rent accounting.
Coming in tomorrow, Friday.
Um, hope of possibly getting someone in our department, like the O S C sergeant Hudson, as a trained fire inspector, suspect?
Investigator.
Investigator, all right. So why don't you take the floor and explain to us a little about how this works?
So at the present time, um, in this general area of the county, I'm the only one that's up this way. And I live between Scott and Valley Falls. So we also use Paul Davendonis through the sheriff's office. And he's used on a request basis. I would like to try to do the same thing if I could, um, with John. We have a fire up in this area, up in the town of Housick, um, if we could use him. On a positive note, as many of you know, when the clubhouse burned on Christmas Eve, John was very influential and I was the only one there. And I gotta tell you, John did about ninety-five percent of my legwork because of my commitments of the holiday. But John and I talked on the phone a real lot between Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. So that kinda started the wheels turning.
You're just like a navigator.
Yeah. So I will answer any questions. I also brought, um, Timmy Houdak. He's my senior fire investigator. We don't have a lot of young members and I'd like to get some other interest started, and John was very interested in it. So let's, if we can get to first base tonight, where, um, there's a, a document that's gotta be signed by John and the mayor. I, I'm not real familiar with all that. My, my boss, my supervisor, Jay Wilson, he does the same thing with, um, Paulie Davendonis. And we have another police officer out of East Green Bush, um, kinda does the same thing. Um, they come out and help us investigate, um, fires.
So you only have a few people who are able to do this right now, for the whole county?
Correct. Correct.
How many fires do you guys have to do this for?
Last year we did fifty-six.
Wow.
We have seven investigators right now.
So when there is a fire, state fire doesn't come out and investigate?
Not, not, that's recall. We can do everything they can do. We're all trained and certified and seen.
I just, I just have some couple of questions. Mr. Houdak, long time no sees, working along.
Okay.
Down in Brunswick, Dan Shadig. Right now, um, Mr. Hudson works for the village police department and his salary is funded by the village residents. How many fires do we have in the village on average? Signal thirty fires, like is it fair to say not very many?
He does all the records for me. At the top of my head, I.
Not, not very many.
I'm prepared for that, but. I wanna say five or six.
Signal thirty?
Well, I don't know, now you understand something, you call a signal thirty, now a signal thirty is a large working fire with usually. So by law, through the fire chief, um, the fire chief is determined all firing indoors explosions. So there's many of fires here in the village that I have been to that only Housick Falls Fire Department has gone to that needed investigation, um, so I, I don't like to classify it as signal thirties, like when the clubhouse burned.
But in the case of Davodonis, he's, he's paid for by the county, therefore the cost of his overtime or whatever's distributed amongst county residents. This would be purely funded by the village for the surrounding areas, right? Who would be, who would be paying for this?
Uh, that, that, I guess I would have to refer to you, what, whatever you discussed on, I don't know how you guys are set up, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
That's a discussion the mayor and I were gonna have at a later time.
Well, it's also a question, who pays for it to happen in the village already?
Well, we have, for example, the county, you guys are investigating, and that's one of.
Yes, we, we get.
That's, that's county.
Me and I are on a part-time basis for the county, basically a stipend for the, for the county on a quarterly basis.
And that's, and that's funded by the entire county, like, but from the county coffers, if you will.
Correct. That comes out of the blockless budget, yeah.
And then. Right, and then, and then you can call OFPC, which is covered by the entire state, right? This is covered from the state budget or A T F and the event, both very serious.
Yes.
My concern is that, you know, as a village, we've had some discussions on some things that we're doing. I noticed some talk about the landfill and everything tonight, or not the landfill, the transfer station, that we're, we're kinda taxed on what we're doing outside of the village. And I just don't wanna be in a situation where we're funding, uh, fire investigation outside the village when the police department here in the village is fully fu, is entirely funded by village residents. Um, and as you know, when you get into major fires, you could be, I mean, the sky's the limit on the number of hours of overtime and everything, depositions, court time, witness testimony, all this kinda stuff. And I just don't wanna be in a situation where the village taxpayers have to foot the entire bill for this for something that doesn't, it's, it's entirely outside of the village. I think it's a noble effort, I just don't think it's the village's responsibility to fund this, except for fires that occur within the village limits.
Well, I briefly had this discussion with John.
Yep.
And I had asked him about that. And he said at this point, when he becomes the, the chief of the police department, he's on a salary basis.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that, but.
I believe that's what I'm told.
Months does the title change, yeah.
And again, I, I don't, I'm, I'm just here to.
Yeah, no, no, I, I.
I'm just answering your guys' needs. As far as financially goes, I understand what you're saying. And I had asked John that, um, how, how would that be done? And he said, well, once I become the police chief, I'm, um, salary based, so that would be something that the police chief, and I don't wanna speak for him tonight, we would have to work out with, with you.
Yeah, and we get the city of Troy, for example, talking to Richie Salucci, the chief down there and stuff. The battalion chiefs investigate the fires in the city of Troy, but they don't leave the city of Troy. So it's, it's investigated by the B Cs within the city, for the city residents, and the stays within the city. I just don't wanna get into this. I'd rather stay in a situation like Troy has, where they, you know, they investigate their own fires within their own limits for the people that are actually paying for it. I just, I just think.
Well, your, your fire department, they call us, your fire chief.
Right, because it's funded by the whole county.
Calls, calls us.
Right.
I mean, we do, as, as Timmy stated, we are as certified and without me getting my hand slapped, and we're probably in a better situation right now than the state is, and I'll leave it at that. As far as our staff qualifications and what, how long we've been doing this. My need is, is to get some other people started. Use, use John in, in this area if we, if we can. And, and as far as your funding and all that goes, I guess that's something that you guys would, you folks would have to work out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned, there's already, the services are already out there and available, I don't know why we would need to take that on. That, that's just my concern, but that's all I got.
Well, what, what happens at times, and I'll be honest with you, um, I'll go back to the clubhouse fire. There was just me, and there was a whole lot of work to be done. And your problem, it's not your problem because I can't get other fire investigators to come out. But if we had somebody that was available there that could lend us a hand, that would be terrible.
Right, and that fire was within the village limits.
But there seems to be two issues here. The first issue is whether John would be a fire investigator and in the village. And then the second issue is if he's a fire investigator, what's his work, local work leave outside the village? I don't, I don't think we're debating whether he should be a fire investigator within the village. The question is outside the village, and my understanding is it's a matter of choice, it's not a matter of demand. It would not be, well, you gotta be in Nassau tomorrow or today for a fire, right? It's a choice of do you go or do you not go? Am I correct about that?
And I think the other, to, to circle back to that, um, if he's on the clock, who's in a sense paying for that? Now, I'm, um, I understand your concerns completely. I'm of a little bit of a different viewpoint, because I've gotten to really know and understand how all the emergency services work together. And I think that there is value in having that set up, even if that means John responds to something in the village one time or twice in a year for the town. I think that kind of, um, situation will revisit itself if and when there's another fire in the village and we have somebody else coming in to help with that. I see how that all works together and I think that there, um, not, not to say there isn't an important conversation to have about the fact that we're basically letting John, you know, paying John to go do stuff in other municipalities, which to, to village taxpayers is like, well, wait a minute, why is that? But it's, it's in the, it's a shared service thing, it's a shared service resource that comes up as needed, and emergency services are always as needed. Um, in my time as mayor, we've had two significant fires. The first one was the country club and the second one was by, behind the American Legion.
And we investigated that one too, yeah.
Yes. That was, um.
That was a point that I wanna bring out for the rest of you.
Yeah.
When we, when we, the county, we come into the village, you have a police department, we use your police department. And you're no different, Denise Green Bush, um, North Green Bush, Skodak, the state police, or the sheriff's department. They, they work with us, whether it's a criminal investigation, or whether it's just a plain cause and origin determination, they work with us. Most of the time, um, I would say, pretty much most of the time, I can't ever imagine not coming here in Housick Falls. And I've been doing this almost thirty years, um, that there hasn't been a police officer here long before I did here.
No, and I, I don't want you to think that.
And when they, and when they, they're here, at least with John and a couple of the other ones, I think it's the one we did up on Scott Street, is that got the right street, that house fire?
Yeah, that's, that's.
I'm aware of that one, yeah.
Right, but I'm saying, that, you had a couple of other, oh, police officers there, they had done all the interviews and all of that. So like I said, this.
Right, and I, and I, no, and I, I agree with you, you said.
The sheer services.
When you come in the village, that there's already resources in place, and I just don't wanna see us be doing fire investigations in Steven Town and Nassau and Grafton. I, I just don't think, I mean, it's one thing if it's a, a house just outside of the village or whatever, but, you know, we get ourselves into.
Yeah, the question, it's location and it's pay, and right now, we know that we're cashed. Yeah, the question, it's location and it's pay and right now we know that we're cash strapped and we're person strapped in, in the police department. I'd like, those are just the realities.
And I'm just asking for it right, right now for the village, for that area. And then the rest of that would be, you guys would have to work that out with your police chief, but what, what the mayor has up there with the MOU.
Yeah, this is the one that was said.
That's, that's how.
Now, this one.
That's how the county is setting that up. And, and again, I'm not a politician, um.
Yeah.
Some of all that, I don't understand and I really don't wanna comment on it 'cause I don't know how that all works out. You know, maybe John or the mayor can, can fill you more on that than, than I can.
And you know, i- i- if it's a situation where we say, okay, in the village and the town of Huzek, or maybe we, you know, town of Huzek and maybe like one of the municipality over. Maybe we can have some conversations with those municipalities about trying to come up with a, a, a way to share the cost burden on that.
There's a reasonableness in that.
I think, yeah, I.
Share services being reasonable.
Yes, there's an absolutely, this is a very reasonable request. I'd like to see it happen, but the same time we have to be responsible with our funds and I just, there's a compromise in there that we're not gonna find tonight, but I think it's absolutely worth pursuing.
Just answer your own, answer your own, excuse me. You answer your question.
I'm sorry.
I gotta tell you, two or three times a year.
That's what I was gonna add, that's what I was asking. What, how much time are we talking?
I'm kinda going, and, and, and again, I don't wanna be nailed down to this because.
Sure.
In Scotticook, we had an arsonist run around for a long time and we did.
Ooh, bunch.
First name man.
It was a bunch. It was double digits. But on the same token, as far as accidental fires or stuff to go through, one or two, three.
There's sort of vehicle fires.
That's no same.
Nine times out of ten they call us because they're, it's intricate to figure that out.
So what's the cost of the training?
Yeah, what's the timeline and the cost for training? Like, is it a week, two weeks, three weeks?
And I, I just started to look into that. I just contacted OFPC, um, the, the training class that's coming up in March is full. Um, and we'd have to see, again, it's a decision all on tonight, so I'm just.
Yeah.
Putting this out there. It would be June, I think is the next class, June or July.
Maybe later.
Is it at the academy?
Yes.
Which academies is?
And answer your question, the cost.
Fire Academy.
Is that the.
The cost isn't a lot.
Preston County?
No, state.
State.
Oh, okay, 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 thank you.
Out of Montour Falls, off by Watkins Glen.
Okay.
Well, I say that. I better be careful.
Well, 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 yeah, we'll figure it out.
They're, well, they're going to go through a major overhaul out there and I don't know, the last I heard, um, the state's gonna spend millions of dollars up, update the academy.
Oh.
If, if there's somebody, we have a Capitol district meeting tomorrow night. If there's somebody there, I will find all that out and I will let you know so you can
And I'll pass it on.
Tell them where we stand with all that.
Okay.
Cause we all know how the state is. Today we're over on that side of the street, tomorrow we'll be over on this side of the street.
Yeah. So it's how long's the training, how much is the training?
I don't know. I don't.
And that's what we'll figure out.
I think I, I, I think we need you to table for how do we get answers to that question.
Well, we don't need, yeah, we don't need to make a decision tonight, but I think it was important for us to kinda a- ask the questions, you guys and.
And the, the other thing you guys should be aware of in this, maybe this will change forward. There was an FLSA case, which is a fairly standard attack case, came out of Montour Falls about payment of overtime. And they had to pay those guys, some of the fire departments were not paying them for the, they, they were waking up at three in the morning, they were doing whatever. And they had to pay them twenty-four hours a day.
You're doing, you're, you're talking, you're dealing with the unions.
No, 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 this is, this is federal labor law. They had to pay them, what came out of it was they had to pay people who were on Montour Falls, like we paid twenty-four hours a day while they're there. So we really need to know what our cost is.
And this is just another one of those weird questions, like right now, John is our OIC, he's a sergeant in the department and he is a member of the union. Um, which means if he works forty hours a week and then he goes investigates for five hours, that would be considered overtime. So there's like, there's just these weird situations that we have to work through, but again, I think it's worth looking at, so. So thank you guys very much for coming out.
Thank you.
And more communications than anyone.
Yes, I will, I will, I will keep John posted and if John wants me to come back and speak to you, I, I will.
Great. Thank you guys. Thank you. You're fine with, with whatever. Very exciting meeting, always. All right, um, Chuck, you are here. Uh, Chuck, um, while you were gone, we opened up the public hearing. We did hear from, uh, Sam back there who expressed some concerns to the board to being one of the properties right next door. Thank you guys again.
Pleasure meeting you. Pleasure meeting all of you.
You guys.
Take care.
Thank you. Um, and you know, I guess to summarize, we understand her concerns as, as a property owner next door. What are so- some of the ways that Stewart has in the past worked with people who are living nearby about, you know, barriers shifting things over so they're not as close to neighboring buildings, that sort of thing?
Sure, you live here. Um, I got a call from the person who fronts on River Street. I think one of the users recommended he reached out to us about, um, potentially having a driveway that wrapped around.
Well, she was at the app. She's the one I've talked to so far.
Okay, someone called, um, the last property, um, on River, um, someone had said maybe we tie in, um, at the last meeting or at that.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah.
And you raised the idea about going real time.
Yeah. Um, so that property, that guy did call me and we just don't think that that's a viable solution. Um, but what I did talk to him about, um, was, was fencing, um, landscaping.
I would say like, I mean, six foot fence does nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, some of the concerns too were dumpsters facing on the corner of her property or close to the corner of the property.
Yeah, on the other side of the property, it's just a street.
Where do you have dumpsters right now on this? I have the map up on the screen that you had sent me a little bit back. It's still the same.
So the dumpster, yeah, that's, that's fine. So the, the dumpsters right here. Um, you, you wouldn't put the dumpster up here though because that's the, for lack of better terms, the thoroughfare. Um, so you, the truck would come in and back. I'm trying, the truck wouldn't come.
Side road, this is the side road twenty-two.
Yeah. Yeah, the truck routing, I think is, is, is almost all centric through here. Um, what you, what you don't wanna do is put the dumpster right here, um, unless you um, block that off. And I just don't see. Or you don't see that like.
No, your property goes all the way back to the.
I was gonna say, I actually don't, I think that's my neighbor behind me.
Yeah, you're, did the property, you're.
So that would be Peabodys then?
The guy that called me, yeah.
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
Um, and his only request is to leave whatever trees we can and put up the fence.
Have you guys ever done like special bushes that are a little bit fuller to absorb some noise and light? I think. Yeah, anything of that nature before?
Like your, like my backyard right now at night, like I like it, it's dark, it's peaceful.
Yeah, the house blocks all the activity from the, the garage.
Even the crabs don't do anything and I, they don't, they don't like.
And it's all inside.
Yeah, and, um, there, and even during the day, like they're inside, they're quiet, um, but like you're gonna flood my backyard and then I also, are you gonna be playing music?
What flood your back, go back to the common.
With, with light.
Oh, okay. Um, we have the, we can change the, we don't have to do the outside audio, so we could take that off, um. But the light, I mean, the, unfortunately, the canopy is fixed at like fourteen feet.
Yeah, which is why six foot fence is like.
They shut all the lights off for all the stores at night.
Uh, they do, yeah. I mean, the store, so the store will be open five AM to eleven PM, the store would go dark.
North Huzek is pitch black at night.
Yeah.
So they could, they put eight foot fence instead of the six foot fence instead of.
Yeah, I mean, to her point though, it doesn't, it's, the, the fence is certainly more, I mean, and I could, I could certainly do that, um.
One time a scre- screening, not so much, just to get in the sound so it's not a distraction, but.
Yeah, no, the, an eight foot fence is definitely something we'd be willing to do, but again, like there's still six feet between the top of the fence and the bottom of the canopy.
Yeah. Is there anything that can be done to the side of the canopy facing our house to keep the light from going over?
They're all downlit, so, so again, like these are like the site plan elements, so this is like more of a typically a planning issue, so
Yeah.
we, we submit a, a site plan application. Um, it's all downlit lighting, so there's intensity under the, the light or, um, there, there's the intensity under the fixture, um, there's not like, it's not the tube lights anymore where there's like light all over the place. So you'll have, um, intensity under the canopy, uh, and then it'll be, it'll dissipate very quickly, um. Um.
Chuck, can you point out exactly where the curb cuts gonna be on the canopy?
Yeah, the, the curb cut's gonna be right here and here and here.
Yeah, so I'm also gonna have like tanker trucks driving like right next to my house. Like, like just, like you're, like honestly, you're killing me.
Uh, I mean, un- unfortunate.
You're, you're killing my property value, you're killing like the, like quality of life that like I have, um. And, uh, there's like no, there's like nothing positive being offered.
Yeah, for you. Un- unfortunately, like you could look at it from the perspective of you don't see it beneficial to you. Um, the flip side is, is that we can't, you know, the, the, the situation we currently have in the village is not sustainable. So this is the only properties that we found that we could do something with, um, but the zoning doesn't match from one twenty-nine to one thirty-one. Um, I, I, I can work with you on the lighting, um, we can go to like a yellow light, we could.
And, and, and that was in a sense gonna be our summary, what, what, it sounds like a lot of us would like to see if you guys could work with
Yeah, I could certainly.
or possibly a couple of other ones, residents nearby just to.
Yeah, we, we did, you did get a letter from us, correct?
Yeah, and it gave me the wrong time and place for this meeting, so that was also nice.
It did, it never been three.
Yeah, that apparently said seven o'clock at, uh, the Armory for the public hearing, so I was gonna ask you to hang out a little bit longer after this, just to see if anyone else shows up.
Oh.
Is there, is there other things that can be done, like, like Arbor VITI's put in?
Yeah, we could do all that stuff. The problem is, is that even like the Arbor VITI isn't gonna get to fourteen feet for, you know, for some time. Like I, and, and we'll do all those things. Again, like more site plan thing than, than zone change type thing. Uh, the problem is, is that, you know, at fourteen feet, that's the height of the canopy. Like, we can't drop the canopy because the canopy is designed for the tanker to drive under. Um, so we can't make the canopy any lower, you know, than, than that, than that height.
What about compensating or if she has demonstrable loss of property there?
I struggle to think that with the number of stores we have, that no one else has ever demonstrated a demonstrable loss by the, you know, placement of the stores.
I, I'm no, I'm no real estate expert, but I mean, if, if Stewart's, but if Stewart's moved in next door to my house,
I am.
some, that's gonna be a consideration for somebody that wants to buy it. I mean, there's just no way around it. You have noise, you have garbage, you have light. That's a lot different than having Gordon who starts up shop at five o'clock, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's different. There has, you, the, there has to be some loss of value or interest in our property. I, that's just my opinion. I'm, I'm not a real estate expert, but if I was gonna look at our property to buy it, there has to be some type of negative valuation from having the commotion next door.
I mean, I disagree.
I mean, there's tons of studies that have been done. Like houses near gas stations are thirty-five percent less, I mean, like gas than houses that are not. Like this isn't just a Stewart's, a gas station. Like the Stewart's already is kinda like noisy, but then there are gas station on top of it and there's far more vehicles coming in and out. And also like parking there, aisle length, like gas fumes. Like it doesn't matter how many safety precautions are put in place, like there's still gas fumes, things still leak and like there's noise. Like that's just, I feel like factually untrue that my property not even not be damaged by having a gas station as my neighbor.
So, I mean, there's, there's not much we can resolve right now in terms of our opinions on how this would work. We understand your concerns and I wanna make sure that, uh, if you can linger for if anyone else.
Yeah, no, you definitely can.
seven, seven fifteen. Um, but it's, but we would be interested to see if there's any sit-down that could be, that could be done to, uh, address.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, those are typically the elements through, through site plan and like the.
Right, not through this situation right now.
Not through the, this situation. I'm just, I mean, the eight foot fence is easy, the Arbor VITI, um, pushing, you have to push the edge of pavement out a little bit and it's already, you know, kinda tight, but I think we could fit the Arbor VITI along that row, um. But that's unfortunately, like, I mean, what about on your side of the fence? Like, is there, would there be a way to plant on your side of the fence?
I mean, I'm. If you, if like Stewart's paid to take down like big trees that are right there.
Okay.
That could be something to discuss.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, but also like.
But not along the actual house and deck, cause that's paved right there, so.
Yeah, but if you have big trees there on that side already, you don't want the trees to come down.
So it's, it's, the big, was it? Well, if you like were to plant Arbor VITI in a way that it acts like a screen, you would wanna take, it would make sense to take trees down that don't act as any sort of barrier.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could meet up at your house and go through it. I don't think that that's, it's certainly not off the table from my perspective, um.
Do you have, do you have, uh, Samantha's information?
Just the address, so I'll run to my car and grab my card, um, but, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem fixing the elements I can control, but there, you know, are definitely elements, I'm, I'm just being completely honest, I'm not gonna be able to control the canopy height. I can get rid of the, the outdoor music, that's, that's not an issue. I'm trying, what I'm looking at right now is just the placement of the, the canopy as it relates to the driveway. Um, I mean, maybe we can get rid of the light that would normally be, um, at the driveways and go to like, instead of doing like a eight or twelve foot light, we could do like a, like, like do like a bollard lighting like here and here so that it's, it's lighting below the, the fence height. Um, so that's one, one more thing.
So yeah, these are, this is all good, this is, this is stuff I'd love to have you guys get together about and then this is kind of something in the weeds, it's more planning zoning specific, but.
It's a site plan, it's also, it's a site plan stuff.
Uh, yeah, so Samantha, we hear you and we're, we're glad to hear that you're starting to come up with some ideas.
Yeah.
Um, encourage you guys to keep working together on that.
Yeah.
Our responsibility right now is specific to the local law, but also hearing what people are saying and if you can linger till at least probably seven twenty, if anyone else comes in, that would be great.
Yeah, no, no, I do. I'm strongly, I'm gonna grab my card.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna continue to leave the public hearings open for now. And if it's all right with the board, I'm gonna zip through the next items. Is that all right?
Yeah.
All right, there's over two pages of updates of just projects that I wanted to have out there and on the radar. Um, you can read them on the agenda. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things. In terms of our new water source, we've received our permits that were being pursued by our attorneys and the company's attorneys. Um, our attorney actually noticed that they had made a mistake in one of the permits, so they had to set, submit a modification, uh, letter that specified that we're gonna continue to use our current wells until the new wells are up. Without that, we technically would not be allowed to, so that would be silly. Um, but I was grateful for them to, uh, get that done and that's an important step forward. And the second thing is that the town of Huzek, through both the planning board and the town board, has approved the open development area. Went in front of the board on Monday in the town. Uh, Attorney Engel was there, Attorney Denoyer was also there, so that's a big thing. And the next couple items, uh, in the next couple months will be the transaction by which the new parcel at the wells will be conveyed to the village. Trustees, any questions on that or I'll just keep going? Interrupt me with any questions on any of these points, please. All right, uh, number three, Oakman Sui First Street site, um, you can certainly, um, give us some more information, but, um, Elena wasn't, uh, was able to get in touch with DEC and, and their attorneys, and it looks like things may be going, uh, be getting simpler, especially because Elena has a lot of experience on this type of transaction situation, which was great to hear. Um, do you have anything you wanna add?
I'm just pulling up the email real quick.
Okay, and I have, um.
I did agree, cause I, essentially I informed him, you know, what the case law says as far as the paper street, that if the village never accepted it, doesn't maintain it, then we don't own it. Um, and then you look to the deeds of the abutting property owners. Oakman Sui owns on both sides of the paper street, except for a small portion in the beginning. Half of that would be the, I can't remember the abutting property owner's name, but it's some, somebody different. Um, so it's just a very, very small portion of that that essentially wouldn't.
Thank you.
Be owned and, um, owned by Oakman Sui, and then they might even have an adverse possession type claim if they're maintaining it, but I'm not getting into that aspect of it. My point is to explain that to him and let him know with that in mind, obviously the intention is to deed it over to the village and then there could be a deed restriction that would prevent the village from putting, putting any street in there and that should satisfy their concerns. Um, he, and I explained, you know, if we had to do a quiet title action, that could take like a year and a half and obviously not to anybody's benefit. He said he doesn't believe that that would be necessary. Um, and seemed to be fairly satisfied with the information I gave him and, um, just really wanted me to make sure that his understanding of it was correct, so. um just really wanted me to make sure that his understanding of it was correct, so it sounded pretty promising from my interactions and conversations with him.
And I have some updates from uh Engel for executive session related to it.
Where's the papers, what what paper street are we, there's a paper street down there by the Oakman?
There was one that was discussed and showed up when DEC was reviewing things to try to to close off everything, and that was the holdup for DEC closing office is this lingering issue about, yeah.
Oh.
Is that the old bed that you started?
Cause like where is the paper street?
I think so.
I don't even know.
Well, I might, I had a map in my email.
Did I, did I send that to you?
No.
What was the, what's the attorney's name?
Um it's oh Fatrick, no, it's um.
Yeah, that's something like that, yeah.
Oh Fatrick is the is the plant, man, it's the Sui's plant manager.
But who's the attorney, would it be Denoyer?
No, Fatrick is the one who sent me the whatever his name is, I don't know his.
Saturn. Okay, John Fatrick, uh F A T C H E R, I see.
I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Oh, that's right too, the village bought that property from the railroad, so that would be the villagers' property that runs through there.
And I think there, it sounds like there had been a plan to make it a road, but it never happens.
Those are all over the place.
Well, there was there was a plan, one time he took the greenway right down through the sack of those houses, but there's so many squatters that take had taken over the property that they they abandoned that.
Alright, as soon as I, as soon as, oh, here it is. Where on here are we talking?
Yeah, I don't know, it's so man, it's like kind of in the middle, you know, it's still down. And then right like that weird piece, it kinda goes right through the middle down a little bit, yep, yep.
This one right here. This is the spot we're talking about.
So right in that, the bottom right corner of that is the that white, kind of like, I can get up, yeah.
Nixon Street. Right here? Here, I think I raised my mouse.
This is an a different property owner, so half of this section right here, like this small section would just be what is not
Okay.
um probably legally Oakman Sui.
Okay. But so.
So but the DEC's concern is essentially that a road can never go in there. So if we're really only talking about that small portion at issue anyways, a road's not gonna go in there.
Okay.
I think, so I think that they're otherwise satisfied with um that explanation, it's just a matter of what do they need from us.
Right.
And it's, I mean, it almost sounded like my email to them might be, they might be okay with.
Yeah.
Um I know that Dave had sent an email just shortly before the meeting, where maybe there was some mediation, somebody had a resolution to,
Yes, that's.
I I don't know exactly, but they were looking for some type of resolution to um designate a a paper street, I don't think that that's.
That may not be nice.
I think I think that that might actually make it more of a mess, so.
Okay, alright.
Um I will follow up and just make sure that there's nothing else that they need from us.
Okay.
I don't know what your update is for executive session, but that might.
It it it's not really related to to this.
Okay, okay.
Sounds like you're gonna have to go through all those boxes in the basement over there, Rob, and find out.
I am, oh gosh, alright, moving on, is there any other questions on Oakman Sui for this? Okay, CR meeting, meeting, we had our first meeting, I was very grateful for everyone involved, um especially, I know trustee Sauer has made this a really important priority for the board, has led taken the leadership on that, so thank you Doug. Kevin has been involved in trying to get this to happen, Bobby has been involved in this from the whole thing. Um I don't know, I'll figure you can just wait if you want to, your police report uh to say something, but I was just very grateful um to be there and 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 Doug and I were both there and basically said thank you and we're out, so you guys can do your own thing as a board, and that was great. Um a couple service updates that we've been working on, we have a new foil request form that is now on our website in a couple different spots. Um we I also worked with the PD to create a new incident report request form. Uh and the police actually have both forms in case what they're, someone's looking for is not specifically an incident report, it would go through foil uh and to Clarissa's office. Um and also on the village website, under the code enforcement department, we have now listed out all of the local laws from the past probably twenty twenty-five years that are related to code and zoning, uh with the description and the link right there, so you can just click it there and find it and look at it. Um just as something we're just trying to be better at, so um. What's that?
Didn't we already have this zoning laws on the website?
We had a couple of them and kind of mishmash on the website, but they were very hard to find. So they're up there now, um and they're considerably easier to find.
Good.
Awesome, alright, um let's keep going. Um so this was kind of a, one of those frustrating things that I just kind of didn't really think we had the time as a village to handle, and now it's time to handle it. Um in the midst of all of our PFA, PFOA stuff and trying to figure out a new water source and pushing DEC to go for a local source and developing that water source, EPA, who's also involved in our superfund site, was also expressing frustration that we had not uh come into compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act's twenty eighteen amendments under America's Water Infrastructure Act. Um so we were served with an administrative order, I talked to EPA about it to explain the situation, they were very good and amenable about it. They submitted us a second letter that gave us time to do it, and I spoke with Robert Flores of Delaware Engineering, who's familiar with all of our water and sewer um infrastructure and everything, and who's done this before. And I have a proposal for us tonight to consider to take on Delaware Engineering to help us get this done by the end of August for four thousand dollars, and I'll show that to you guys tonight. Do you have any questions on this? Okay.
Is this the report that they put out yearly with the 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 full page ahead of all of our water system, is that the?
No, this is uh. This is a different thing, nope, that's the mayor, it's nope, that's foil. This was the um, this is basically what they're talking about, it's the Safe Drinking Water Act. Um it the what they're asking for is specifically uh a threat assessment, well, I'll show you on the um actual Delaware engineering item.
It's an emergency response plan, like a, yeah, it's a plan that gives emergency, what are we, what are we doing?
Yes. Yeah, uh we have a risk and resilience, uh we have something like that that the state and county require. We have to basically go through the process to make sure it adheres to what the federal guidelines are as set forth like federal law. So in the midst of all of the water stuff we have to deal with, we're also taking this on, but this is a time where we feel like we can take it on, cause the new water source is coming. And there's an every five year requirement for this, obviously, we're several years late, so we will be able to get this done, and then we'll be very close to to revising it, and we can submit it early for the next round. So that's uh just yet another thing, but I thought it'd be important to get on the record. Any other questions on this? Alright, just coming to continue moving forward. Um the we had a really uh interesting first sit down with New York Forward, um and there were four main takeaways that I wanted to make sure we had on the record. Um we put out a vision with project ideas, but those are not definite, they can be altered, things can be added, things can be taken away. Other projects can come into this, be added later, that weren't originally in the design, as long as it fits within our vision and the the area. Um the next big step is the formation of the local planning committee, the LPC, they refer to it. It's usually about ten or twelve members, it's co-chaired by the mayor of the municipality and the state uh and a state employee who's connected to the REDC and tends to live locally in in the greater community or area.
I don't think it's a state employee, I think it's a member of the board of the Capitol region.
Oh, I thought it was a state employee, yeah.
No, no, cause in Cambridge, it was the community loan fund.
Oh, okay, I had I had put that down in my notes, and I was surprised, but but.
Is Cambridge starting getting money from?
No, we're getting, they're not even getting money for a year.
No, no, no. And that's, that was the important thing, the third thing that we learned about was the timeline. This year, February and March will be the formation time of the LPC. April to October will be going through the many steps to end with a strategic investment plan. That will be not four point five million dollars of projects, but approximately six million dollars of projects, so the state can go through and make changes and stuff, but after we get all of those details hammered out and done, it still has to go through months of state review for various departments and the governor's office as well. And likely, they won't be announcing things until early twenty twenty-five of what's awarded. So we have four point five million dollars, we have a lot of stuff to do to work on that, they have final say as to what gets done. And then in early twenty twenty-five, once the announcements come, then we have to mobilize, put things out for bid, construction done, and once those projects are done, then the state will start taking that money for each of the projects and reimburse it into the proper things, which is why Doug wanted to make sure everyone understood that we will likely will not see reimbursement money coming until the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-five at the earliest, that's our analysis of it.
So we have to be shovel ready, but they're not contract ready.
Or you have to, that's that's tough to plan when you're planning out.
It throws out a lot of our budget.
It it actually significantly changed a couple, couple things, so it's it's it was definitely a curveball, I mean, again, it's it's four point five million dollars, which is great, but um it is,
You could have said, no, that's right, what are we gonna do, say, no, either.
We're we're frustrated, but we're just going to put our head down and move forward and do the best.
The reimbursement, they're saying the contracts will be retroactive, they they do do a public announcement, which is interesting, but yeah, is the truth. So if they announce in February, even though the contract may not happen till September, October, those expenses incurred also due to public announcement can go in, but it also sounds, except for the public funding, you're not gonna get any money to totally complete the project to their satisfaction.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you gotta have working capital considerably to put it up
Yeah.
to make this work while they sit on the money.
So you could, so if you were in it right now, you you couldn't start now and then expect the money in two thousand twenty-five?
Only from the point that they publicly announce it.
Right.
Which will be in two thousand twenty-five.
Now, we could, we could put out some sort of short term loan, knowing that that money would come back
It's ridiculous, it's.
to get the capital now, but again, it's more process and procedure for us.
Yeah, 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 but they won't pay the others, so.
You guys have any other questions on New York Forward right now?
I I just have a question for Doug, the local planning committee, do they have to live within a certain geographic area of the of the targeted area?
The local planning committee, no, they sure don't have a business in it, but it's subject to approval from the state, so we don't create it, we
Yes.
the mayor gives suggestions
Yeah.
and they have to prove it, so you're gonna have to rationalize why somebody's not in.
Yeah, and then the state has to give the final say on it, so that, over the next couple weeks, that's what I'm developing, is is that, I'm gonna start reaching out to people.
The the one reason I ask, I me I mentioned the name to you, but doesn't live in Housick, but was interested because of this the strong connection to Redfield.
Yep, I think as long as we can justify and explain things, we're gonna be in good shape.
Oh, okay.
Um but I did say uh to Doug, um the the first names on my list are going to be Doug and Trish Blumberg.
However, they only want one elected official on the board.
Without question. They only want one, and I'm going to make sure that we have two, because
Yeah. Yeah.
Doug has been such an incredibly important part of this.
The the interesting thing about this is, is that the consultant and the state agencies are heavily involved.
Yeah.
They will write the proposals and the projects, so local planning committee then writes off on it, and then those same state agencies gotta take three to four months fine tuning their own proposals.
To edit them. So checking for period, you know, possibly, yeah.
And then it goes to the state agencies to review, then it goes to the governor's office, so it's like if if they're writing the proposal to begin with, and they're gonna spend, they what they say, to do editorial work?
Yeah, they said, adaptates and adaptate across the odds.
One to two months. They said one to two months to make sure all, everything is set, cause they have to do this with a bunch of different committees at the same time.
Would it have like a one one person writes a proposal, then it's then it's independently audited by somebody?
It's kind of like.
Sort of, but there there's still like the LPC still has to make sure that the vision statement makes sense, it's also say, make sure that the area makes sense, and all of the projects are looked at from the vantage point of does it fit within all the things, all the goals that we're trying to do.
Al- also the consulting firm, with the New York City based firm, however, they have one employee who's in Kingston, so therefore, they said that person understands upstate, we would be worried on this.
Well, this will be all ready for like annual, it'll be just two hundred anniversary in two thousand twenty-seven.
There you go, there you go.
That is a positive thing.
Actually, I I I, I mean, if if we're if we're breaking ground in mid to late twenty twenty-five, finishing up projects in twenty twenty-six, that is a great investment in the village
I'm still always looking at the birthday.
for that that huge celebration.
I think that's wishful, cause actually, if Cambridge got theirs last year, which would have been twenty twenty-three.
Nobody's seen it dollar.
Right, under that same schedule, they should be a year behind us, they should be getting money in last quarter.
You're ahead of us, right.
No, no, they they would just be submitting the the SIP and waiting, that's where they would be at this point.
The 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 other piece is that we can't, they're not gonna start our process till every project in the state has been announced. So like last week, they announced two projects in Orange County, so they're not gonna start a process till they announce throughout the state all their projects.
So he came up early to say, explain this and say, if you want, like basically, if you want the head start, let's work on getting the LPC ready, so you hit the ground running.
Some good. Yeah.
And we're both just like, we wanna make sure this moves and moves and moves, so that's why we hammered out, trying to get timeline scheduled, so this is gonna be a big project, um it's gonna be worth it, but we've always heard about now the real work comes, and uh that's those are the hoops, those are the the rules, but that's right.
So at least we won it.
So with that said, can we, can we look at fixing the bathrooms with ARPA money?
Yes, oh. That is something I that that is maybe worth discussing is doing a different way.
I mean, another year of band concerts and uh summer concerts and uh contractor shows.
Or maybe just budgeting it.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, it's it's really embarrassing, you know, people that come to the shows every year, Jesus Christ.
Yeah, no, I I I I agree, I was hoping that, because I I we had that project basically shovel ready. We had designs done, we had a contractor set to do anything else that need be done, and he was ready to give us a list of what needs to be put out for bid. Um so that may be something we do differently, and maybe we look to do improvements differently, maybe we look to expand out the courtroom in the back and try to get a larger meeting place to conserve, you know, as a meeting room for us and for larger for the court, who knows, but yes, I I agree, Kevin. Alright, uh streetlight updates, um it's it's self explanatory, we talked about the difference in the lanterns that they were asking about. Twenty-five particular locations, I sent you guys the email on that, and I have up on the screen, this is the lantern type, and that's just the acorn type, and we're talking only about twenty-five fixtures, but these are important fixtures because about twelve to thirteen of these are right around Wood Park. Um this is what they showed us as a lighting explanation, this is the, which one is this? That's the two forty-seven L, this is the lantern one, which is what we have now.
So I thought.
And then this is what they said would be a dis dispersion lighting wise for the acorns.
So they they said that we would be able to turn up the the light on.
We can control, yes.
So why, why would that be an issue, could we just turn it up up in that location rather than?
I think what they're saying is that with max lighting output, this is the throw, this is the area that they're going to light.
I'm guessing the the acorn, just because the volume of glass, it's just, it just has better light output, right?
No, it's the lantern.
Understand.
This is the acorn.
No, they know what shop is.
Yeah, they still lantern, yeah, mm-hmm, it's opposite there.
Oh, it's the opposite.
This is the acorn, and this is the lantern.
Those are the lanterns.
Cause, cause lanterns are frosted maybe?
No, the lantern throws down, the acorn is, yeah, that was.
It's first spring.
Yeah, yeah, probably the LED.
Oh.
For sleep lighting, the other one.
Cause we currently have the frosted glass now, and the lighting sucks.
The lighting, exactly, the lighting's awful in in that section.
They put new lanterns in bank parking lot, and they don't have glass, it's LED.
Yeah.
No, these are all the LED.
Which is what these are going to be as well.
These are, yeah, so these are what the standard.
I think either way, this is gonna be an improvement over what we have, I prefer the lantern myself anyway. As opposed to the acorn in this box, cause we have lanterns, right?
But the acorns are, the majority of them are acorns, right?
That's what we have in the wood.
In in the Wood Park? I thought, no, I thought there were lanterns along the.
Like the lantern, the lantern.
A long, a long dirt street, like Kneck Street.
Yes, over there, we have the acorns.
Yeah.
Young Street, they're all equal.
Right here, we have the lanterns.
Right, so we're all going to switch to LED.
I guess the reason why we picked the acorn was because it would be uniformed, right?
Right, that's why I thought we're gonna make them uniform, that was the, that was the concept that I thought, that's was
Okay.
My thought process was we wanted to make it uniform, so there was no lantern versus, cause the village parking lot is lantern.
Let me borrow acorns. Okay, I know it's an improvement either way, my preference is the lantern, but if if the majority is the acorn, that's fine by me.
I think it's about the best lighting, cause that's what it's supposed to be, appearance is secondary to.
I'll say this, we had an accident there because we couldn't see.
Oh yeah, we know that, that's amazing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Our post office, so lighting is the public thing.
It's it's not just the 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 fixtures too in that area, it's because there's not enough light poles. There's none between the mistletoe building and uh where the the monument is, there's a gap, there's a gap there on the outside of the road for almost
Right, the monument is right there.
almost a block, for that's why, and that's exactly where the guy got hit by the car.
Right, yeah.
Exactly.
I thought it's over here.
It is black.
Yeah, but they're walking across the street.
Oh, okay.
It is dark in front of that post office at, quickly, whoa.
Yeah. So preference for you would be the acorns?
The bar on my street.
That, that.
No, he's saying the lanterns.
This.
These, these right there, those right there, yes.
But that's what's there now.
These.
That's, oh, yeah.
But that's the lanterns are there now, and they don't, so.
That's the lanterns right now. This is the acorn.
And the lanterns has the better lighting, honestly.
You're, the the lanterns have the better lighting, the acorn is more with what we have everywhere else.
Yeah.
So knowing that is the case, what are you, what are your guys' preferences on this?
On lanterns?
I'd rather keep it uniform first.
Acorn?
Acorn.
Can we add more, can can we add another?
We could certainly look into adding another one right there.
Um, um, well, well, maybe we can, I don't know.
I don't know.
We asked, we asked at one point, the the cost was really high for my opponent, wanna wire underground from where the the junction box is to where that spot is.
Oh, that would make sense.
Well, that's right, it's all buried, yeah.
What's your preference?
Uh the the lantern.
Lantern. Lantern. All right, well, we'll have to figure it out.
We gotta figure it out soon.
Yeah, well, we'll we'll discuss it before the twenty second.
Cause I've gotta let, I've gotta let them know this week.
So, acorn, don't care, lantern, acorn, lantern, lantern, acorn, great, split, perfect. All right, that was a very productive twenty minutes, all right. Um, couple other updates to go through with just all the projects that we have going on, the Landville Leachate La, uh, we have a proposal from Lobella to consider tonight that would finish the remaining piece of the Landville Leachate line, that is troubleshooting and repairing the main run, Kenny, uh, right by the train tracks from the pump station to the sewer plant. We know it's a problem, it's not a huge expense, um, the only question is, how much money do we have remaining in the funding that we've done, and Denise is in the process of reviewing that right now. But in my mind, Kenny, we have to do this, I don't think, I don't think we ask where the money comes from, I think we figure that out.
Just has to be done.
It has to be done, okay.
Is that where the leak is?
Yes, so after you come out of the Leachate, and it goes most of the way down the track and gets ready to go under the track, it's right in that spot. And because it's hazardous material for a bunch of different reasons, it just can't be our village guys randomly digging it and resetting it, so Lobella's set to do that. Um, Sterling Environmental is set to oversee it, and that's on the agenda for later season. Um, very quickly, but this is another couple, another thing we've been working on, water infr- infrastructure improvements, including the Rogers Avenue tank. Uh, we had applied a second time, didn't get funded, but we did find out that our application was considered complete, it just wasn't high enough in the score because there were other more needing projects. Two suggestions they had to modify is, one is getting letters of support from local, regional, and state elected officials, which I'm already starting to work on, uh, for these improvements. And number two, we could actually decide to move forward with the design, the bidding, and the construction, and all of those steps will get us a higher score for funding later, so.
Is that something that Delaware Engineering didn't know about?
No, that's normal, we knew about this, in fact, um, later I'm gonna talk about the U V fil- uh, U V system that we're having put uh, down at the wastewater treatment plant. That is a s- a requirement that came from the state, from D E C, we put in, we put it together the project, and after we had done the project, we got the grant award, and then later, a couple years later, we got more grants awarded, that's just how grants work, it's, it doesn't make any logical sense, but that's just the game and how the system works.
So, how many times we've been denied so far for that?
For this one, we we have seeked it out twice and haven't gotten it.
Twice, twice, right, yeah.
This is the third one, right?
Is this will be our third time at it, now ideally.
I I guess, I guess we pay a firm to put in a proposal, and I have to ask, they didn't put.
No, we didn't, we didn't pay them for this.
Delaware Engineering was not being paid?
Not yet for this.
We got paid for the first one.
For either.
Not for the last two.
They would only get paid if we start going down the work and working together on this.
Maybe they're not the right firm to, for grant writing?
There's, there's nothing that we would do differently with the grant, it's just a matter of, they have a scoring system. One of the the things has to do with median household income, and that's a number that's out of our control, it just is what it is.
Right. Which is, they sent a chart with that.
They, yeah, they just, they set up how to score each thing, and there's only certain things we have control over. Ideally, each year, other things get taken out because they're in process, and that gives us a chance to raise up the number and become more median, but. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, we have more time to think about that, but it is an important thing going on. Any more questions on this?
No.
Unsafe structure, it came down, thank you to all who were involved.
Should we have a moment of silence for that?
Nope, nope, um, so, thank you, Mark, thank you, Police Department, thank you, D P W, for all the work there.
The structure and the car, which I think Kenny had bronzed, right?
Car's been gone.
Car was a while ago, yeah, yeah.
Car's been.
I think we bronzed that.
Um, Greenway Grant, Kevin has resurrected this thing out of the depths of, we've lost control of it, and we're already working on ordering the kiosk, and um, Denise did confirm today that we did, um, I had found a bunch of uh, ways of extending the grant, but I hadn't found the most recent one, she confirmed that we are good through April something, twenty twenty four. And we're.
April this year, yeah, um, if you put the order in today, price did go up a little bit, but she said there's money left in the budget for that, pause.
Yeah. Yep, so we already approved it, it just, for whatever reason.
It never, it never cracks.
It never moved, so, thank you, Kevin, for getting it to move again.
So, at some point, it'll be delivered on a pallet to uh, the spot, Kenny gets to put it together.
He is dope, all right, that works. And then, um, number thirteen, uh, compliance with recent code enforcement laws, we've been talking about this, we have a draft letter to show, we can do it now, or we can wait until Mark's um, report. Uh, moving on, the first local law, uh, which is the um, abandoned vacant buildings, uh, and we also are working on, we don't have it tonight, a junk vehicle one, because things keep coming up, like buildings keep coming down. Um, we can talk about it now, or wait until Mark's report, and I quickly uh, addressed this, but the U V filtration has been a project that has been in design, in in concept since before my time as mayor, um, M R B was actually the group who started working on this, then we got Delaware to take it over, um. We were waiting on this to move forward because we were waiting on D E C to approve our speedies permit, our discharge permit at the wastewater treatment plant, which took over a year, Kenny? It took over a year, that happened in November, we're finally looking to move forward, so the timeline over this current year is um, we're hoping to go out to bid in mid-April, six week window, reviewing the bids as a board in late May and awarding it in the June meeting is kind of our ideal situation. Couple months of prep, groundwork break in the fall, he figures it's about a six to eight month project, so that would be through the winter, finishing up in the spring. And the requirement from our speedies permit is that this is operational from May to October on a regular basis, so we would be able to hit that in spring of twenty, or in twenty twenty five. So this is just another one of those things lingering in the background, we originally estimated this as a one point five million dollar project. Uh, we have since then been awarded one million dollars in twenty twenty, uh, from the water quality improvement something, and then a WEA grant also came in in twenty twenty two for a hundred and thirty two thousand. So what we will have to do is, we will have to do some short term financing to finance this project, and once it's done, like with New York Forward, we will be able to get paid via reimbursement, now, it was one point five million a couple years ago, it's probably, depending on how bids come back, it could be as high as a two million dollar project, which means once this is said and done in a couple years, we'll get the one million, a hundred and thirty two thousand, and we will be left with eight hundred and something thousand, if it were a two million dollar project. Um, to pay this off over a long period of time with zero percent from E F C, cause that is how the game works. So those are just a few of the projects that are on our radar for the year, but I thought it was important to get all those out there. Um, Chuck, Chuck, are you heading out? Was there anyone else who wanted to speak to?
Oh, yeah, she has a copy of the letter we sent, so I was just trying to, if anyone interrupted a meeting.
Sure. No, that's fine, did anyone else?
You can let them hear your comments.
Yeah, um, we have a public hearing, so if you wanted to put your comments on the record, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I I just had a.
Oh, sorry, um, uh, name and street address.
Okay, my name is Kiva Harrington, but my company is B K V and Associates.
So can you hear anything you said, sorry?
Okay.
Would you, would you mind coming forward, just to see if we can't hear you.
I'll speak a little louder, um, my name is Kiva Harrington, but my company is B K V and Associates.
Okay.
Um, my, my question or concern, um, I I'm just finding out about this, obviously, like, uh, my company just owns properties here. My only question is, um, or concern is the housing issue right now, it's really bad. And it just seems odd to me that we're tearing down a house to put up, basically put up a parking lot. Um, I know the housing issue is terrible, there's some involved in it, and that's, that was my concern, that we're taking away opportunities for community members and families, um, for a company, and I know how difficult it is, cause I've been told many, many, many times that Hoozick Falls never changes zoning for anybody. And like, don't ever think that your zone's ever gonna be changed, or anything is ever gonna be changed in your places, but yet, you have this up to be changed. So it's not, it's not like something that is gonna be changed, it's just something to consider, but we're pretty far down the line now.
I will tell you that the history of zoning here, and I started as mayor in twenty seventeen, there had been a lot of work right before the P F O A situation broke to go through all the old uh, zoning laws and codes, catalog them, organize them into one, and the initial goal, I think, was to get that established and then go from there. P F O A put everything else on the back burner, um, but we have been talking about kind of looking at, at and taking another hard look at zoning, possibly bringing in a firm to help with that, cause it's a massive project, but as you can see, we have a lot of projects already going right now. Um, I'm not surprised that that's a sentiment that's out there, cause I've heard that, and I think historically, that's been fairly accurate. But I think that the past few years, we've been looking hard at moving forward and trying to get out of Hoozick Falls, same old, same old. Um, we had one other similar situation with um, a location that the the current zoning map was basically kind of like taking what had already been and just making it in a s- in a sense, what it already was, but in in one spot. Um, but we've been thinking about just kind of looking a- at that in a larger perspective, um, and in terms of this local law and this location, the way it was decided to be zoned, it actually etched out the 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 whole area of commercial industrial for the one house that was already there. So in terms of our our proposing this local law to shift it, it, because it fits in a larger vision of that section, that doesn't mean to say that there isn't a good lo- hard look coming at zoning, but that's also, that's a year's process, a year's on process. We understand the concern about housing as well, because we have heard for years that housing is very hard to come by, and that was a lot of, New York Forward was getting um, private parties involved to in- increase housing opportunities and build things up here, so we understand that, but that being said, I I understand what you're saying, so.
Well, there's plenty of empty buildings in Hoozick, it's just a matter of prying them out of the bank's hands that sitting there vacant for
Yes.
the last ten years or more.
And and finding people to do solid work on that.
No.
How many, how many are you asking, Mark, that are zombie crap and that are unoccupied, they just look like.
What's that? Yeah, I will say, it used to be higher. It's been going down a teeny bit in my mind, but.
The house in question is being torn, that Stewart's is purchasing is falling down as it is, it's not like anyone's maintained that thing, and it's in good working order. The chimney's halfway falling, falling down, I mean, that, the place is not in, it's a single family home as well, so the only thing you could house in there would be a single family, if you wanted to try to house someone.
I can understand that, and I have rehabbed several properties in Hoozick Falls that have been in dire condition. But it is possible, and if the expense is gonna be put in to destroy it, demolish it, there could be an expense to put in to help the community. That's, that's all I'm saying, cause I know the housing situation is really bad. And I just struggle with people, cause seeing that happen, when I'm doing everything I can to make your community a better place, and I have lived several properties here, and I have housing here, and it's hard to see you destroy an area when there's a lot of people in your own community that really need housing. It's it's just something I thought there should, or not.
Mm-hmm, no, thank you.
And does this open the door to the possibility of others coming in and and rezoning properties, or is this solely for corporate?
It's, it's not, it's just, it's not even a solely to for corporate thing, because that's technically would be like a spot zoning from a big person saying, hey, we want this. This is more of a, this concern has come up that this location doesn't make sense, this is, and we understand that, so our goal is to look at how this would fit with what the zoning intention in the area would be, um, that being said, if there are larger ways that we can adjust our zoning in a larger way that's a, in a cohesive vision, that's the kind of place where we're trying to get to be, so we can have those discussions. And we haven't, we haven't been able to do that for years, because there's been so many other things going on, but that's kind of the next step for us.
Well, there's certainly from that place back to uh, Unahod and One Center Street, back in there, shouldn't be industrial anymore, should be more downtown commercial.
And that's, that's something we have to look at, and then have a firmly.
We actually included real borders down there.
Yeah.
But it's currently is industrial though.
Yeah.
Right, it used to be when it was first, it's all, I mean, they had a manufacturing fifty years.
Yeah, yeah, and the zoning that was redone in twenty seventeen basically just kind of put it all in one spot, there very, there's very little that changed from the way things had previously been zoning. When I had started, I I'd been under the impression that it had changed a a lot, but it really hadn't, it just kind of made it very, very clear in one place, which was an important first step, but it was just a first step, it wasn't like, it's it's, it's in a better spot, it just was a, that's it, so.
Well, the only, you don't wanna encroach on neighborhoods these days where you're putting too much commercial in there.
Yeah.
Businesses next to that, people aren't gonna wanna live there, or might just be apartments.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Is there any um, kind of idea what's gonna happen with the Ward-Stewarts?
I received an offer um, to have it be a liquor store, um, to be the, the existing tenant, looking to owner occupy a building.
That's one of like, that's one of two typical things I've seen from Stewart's that have gotten larger, is it just becomes another commercial property.
Yeah, the one in Brunswick's Smokehouse.
Oh, yeah, it did.
It's the, the one in uh, Nassau is is ex- is actually a liquor store.
Brunswick.
But the traffic in and out of there is already a problem, so I have a, have concerns about another retail establishment coming in, and we're having the same problem.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Agreed, okay.
We had a parking study that labeled the problems with that.
Yeah, those are bigger problems.
Well, you can buy a liquor pretty quick.
And we don't need a second liquor store.
Oh, I I I was thinking it would be less traffic, so I thought it would be.
It can be improved, it's all. In seconds, don't worry.
I guess, I don't know how they work.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I know how much I'm in Stewart's now and how I won't be there, so that'll be less traffic, all right.
It's a, yeah, my understanding that the um, existing liquor store is moving, not, not a second liquor store.
Oh. I didn't know that.
Stewart's.
I don't.
That's like, just more information, yeah.
I appreciate that, thank you, all right. All right, um, I'm through with the mayor updates, uh, we can zip through the rest of this, if uh, that's, oh, yes.
Us, people are hurt.
Do you want to speak about public hearing?
I know she's concerned about, just one quick thing, I know she's concerned about the loss of one house.
Yes.
I have a building permit in to build a house, that's right adjacent to where Stewart's would be, so it would be a net zero.
Where's that one?
Uh, Unahod back lot.
Okay.
For that, like for those properties.
Okay.
So, for Kevin. That's, that's what we need, we need more.
Right, we gotta do people to be heard.
Yes, we, well, before we do people to be heard, we have to close the public hearings, I did, you're right, I did forget people to be heard, um, anyone else wanna speak about either public hearing? Yes?
I do have something to add on to your light conversation you guys had about the acorns and the.
Can you share your uh, name and address, it's part of the record.
Um, sorry, Ben Harper, uh, Ten Second Street, I recently just moved in, like, really early this January. Um, a lot of my friends and myself included, we walk home from the library, Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, for, you know, um, community service hours, we go home really late, they close at eight, we're there
Welcome.
pretty much five to eight pretty regularly, um, and that light area would be more of an issue with the acorn lights up, because hearing some guy got hit, like, just in that general area, not really scares me, but it does concern me for my well-being and my friends, because they do live in the village itself, but with the missing light and the the visibility down, like, about fifty percent from what your charts were saying, it does concern me for my visibility and how I can get home safely, even with reduced lights, just on my way to my house.
All right.
So I think if you guys kept up the lights you have now, the lantern lights, I think those ones you have up now, with the larger ones, where they spread out more, if you guys kept those up, you would increase like, safety of pretty much everybody who walks home late at night, instead of ones the acorn lights, and decreasing their visibility and decreasing their, pretty much their safety level being just in that general area.
We're not looking to take them down, we're looking to change them to L E D, it's a matter of what type of of fixture we have.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the ac- the acorn lights, it does seem that you can't really see as much from what your diagram is showing.
But yes, I'm just. Yes, okay, a lantern vote, vote fun, thank you, thank you.
Just like it, cause that's what you like.
I mean, you know.
Come on.
Anyone else on public hearings, or people to be heard? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing regarding the proposed local law number one, which is uh, the zoning amendment, uh, motion by Doug, second by Bobby, further discussion, all in favor of closing?
Second. Aye.
Aye, posers of intentions, carries, public hearing is officially closed, and I'm looking for motion to close public hearing num, the second public hearing regarding the proposed uh, second local law about the um, backup members for the zoning in uh, Fennyport.
I'll plan it, I'll make my motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Bobby.
I can second that.
Thank you, Megan, any further discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, poser of sessions, carries. So as I had said before, um we still have to get um information to and from the county on the local law zoning change as we get had done with love joy, in fact, that we're using that as our our model. Um and I've gotten, I've put in two calls to the county, I haven't heard yet, so I'm just gonna keep trying. Um but hopefully we'll have that um information lined up so that once that is set, then we as a board can decide what we wanna do in terms of the local law. Um so I'd like to, do we need to table it? We can just
You can close it, there's just not a resolution to put down.
Alright, so that that'll be in a future meeting. And because I forgot to have a resolution ready to approve the uh back the the other local law, if that's alright with you, we'll wait until the next meeting for that as well. My uh my apologies on that. Alright, anyone else wanna speak for people to be heard? Okay, hearing done, we will move into reports, police reports, Sergeant Hudson, please.
I think you topped my last month's report.
What's that?
I think you topped my last month's report.
Yep.
Hopefully you yell at you.
What?
You yelled at me last month.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, last last month we did two hundred and fifty nine calls, um if you notice we did
Yeah.
were up in arrests. Um last I was doing office Monday night, I think we were at sixteen arrests already this year.
Oh, I missed that, I didn't put in the numbers there. We have the total calls, I just forgot to put I forgot to put it in here, my apologies on that.
Yes, the calls are down, but you'll see the arrests are up, um
Yeah, it should be eleven. My apologies.
So six calls were handled by the state police, three were handled or sorry, three were handled by state police, six were handled by sheriff's office. Um some of those, I know at least one or two of those is actually while I was working because I was already on another call, so they had to handle the call. Um fifteen calls were assists outside the village where we assisted them. And I didn't, I forgot to give you the domestic and juvenile arrests.
Are those assists or for were the first ones there until they come to believe us? Or a combination thereof?
Probably a combination thereof.
Probably a combination thereof, okay.
Barney runs the numbers and says here.
Yeah, he works his magic, it's pretty impressive.
Uh we had a slew of arrests, lots uh we had a couple of BWIs, um lots of AWO, devil tears. Um false reporting an incident. Um See all the other call details on there.
Mm-hmm.
Vehicles. Um Five oh two, went for a recall. Uh we had it back for two days and there was a very odd noise coming from the rear end which Bobby had heard. And then all of a sudden I heard it and we brought it to Gordon and realized that when Ford did the recall, they forgot to put the car back together correctly.
So I wasn't hearing any, I wasn't, I wasn't
No, you weren't hearing things. You forgot to when you forget to put the nut on the axle, that tends to really
Wow, I assume they did that for free?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool.
We we had our mutual understanding via phone.
Do we have it back yet?
Uh yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
So they paid for the tow bill and all the repairs.
Mm-hmm. Great. Good work, thank you.
They told me uh what do you get here, uh because you're gonna go on a charge account, I left.
Is five oh five back yet?
Five oh three, um might need breaks, we're waiting for five oh five to get back before we take that car to service.
Okay.
We have a timeframe on five oh five?
Yes. One of it, it's going to be done, supposed to be done, Ronnie's gonna be done with it. And then it has to go to I three, that was I three.
I three imaging for the
For the lettering put back on, okay.
Because Ronnie does not do that, bro.
I three imaging is moving soon to uh Village.
Yes.
Where are they now? Harwood Hill in Bennet?
Yeah.
Oh, they're moving the ABC.
Behind one mechanic.
Behind there?
One mechanic street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm meeting with him.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um So like you can see the the cars are getting up there in mileage.
Yep.
Some things we got done, the records room, um
Got a lot done.
Some of them uh saw the some saw the picture of the records room, we got the racks in. Uh we need two more racks to get it complete complete, so we got everything organized. Um we've just gotta work on getting the rest of the records on racks that are in different rooms now, so. Uh we just gotta get like getting more racks. The evidence room um has been reorganized and the evidence fridge has been put into it, we're still waiting on the state tech grant. One day they'll say yes. Um the Lexapro policy uh is up and running, so far we've got eight policies out. Um Elena, the mayor, Bobby and Doug can see usually when I put out policies. Um I've been working with the the chief of Missy Una, he got ahold of me, we're gonna set up a meeting, he's actually gonna come here with me to meet. Um just our case, we've been a little busy to get that done.
Thank you for helping connect that.
So yes, that was actually really good.
Yep.
That is what caused the last six policies to get put out.
That's good, that's good.
Um the recruits, uh so on the policies, we're looking to do five to six policies a week, um. So what happens is I go through policies that we currently have, I then compare them with the Lexapro policies and then I compare them with state model policies. Um and then make sure everything fits and then as long as they all jive, they get it. Sometimes like there needs to be a little bit of modification in Lexapro policy, which requires a little more addition of coverage to them, uh because sometimes they're a little bare, so we add a little to it. Um but really they're pretty uh like Elena knows, they're pretty good policies.
Yeah.
As they say.
Do you find you have to make it more specific to the smaller size of our departments?
Yeah. Alright, yeah. Sometimes I break it down into like divisions and bureaus and all that stuff, but
Recruits have started?
The recruits have started, um apparently day three was a little tiring because I got a picture of one sleeping on the way home because he was deep.
Hopefully not driving.
Yeah, probably not while driving.
Um they're gonna meet with me probably this weekend to see how week one went.
Good.
Uh processing room, our new live scan, um they kind of messed up the live scan. Uh they gave us the wrong software, uh so yep. After this meeting, I gotta go do the test run and the new software will be up and running tomorrow.
Okay.
Um the new software that we're given um is gonna be the identical software that sheriff's office has. I'm in contact with Sergeant Wallery and setting up the VPN in our station so that when the deputies are up in the north end of the county, they can come here to our station and use it as a substation.
That's great.
Right now, if they make an arrest here in the village or the town and say it needs an arraignment, they have to drive
Brunswick.
down to Troy, South Troy, do the booking and processing, drive the person back up here for arraignment. So us opening our station, so a little past knowledge, our station used to be the substation for state police, sheriffs and us. So we're opening a pack up to all those agencies so they can utilize our station.
That's great.
As the state police, because they have their own, but some of them do have access so they can come in and use facilities and things like that, but all the deputies will have access to it.
That's good, that's very good.
Um the new guns arrived. Um which leads us to at some point, we uh we need to purchase a safe to store guns.
That took four hours.
Um department guns.
Don't we have that in the storage room in the PD?
Uh no, that is a rifle safe, we actually need a cabinet or safe of some type to store guns, because now we got a lot of
Upstairs or downstairs?
Uh it would go downstairs.
Okay.
Because right now they're all in my desk.
Okay.
So. On my way down.
Alright.
Um New copiers in.
Good.
Working on glitches, we've got several new processes in place with uh arrest processing and as these weeks go on, we actually uh are starting to roll out some other general orders for people to follow. Some new new forms, we're gonna um get moving on. Some are ripped and things like that.
I'm keep going, I'm skipping ahead to something.
Um I've been in contact with several area chiefs for trying to set up like a regional shared drive uh between us and uh some of the other chiefs of sheriff piles and things like that. Um I actually just got a proposal with Captain Pyle from the sheriff's office and he offered any and all assistance from the sheriff's office because we're both going through the same process with Lexapro preparation. Um so we're gonna try to make all the stuff that we do the same that they do. So that way, if we help them in arrests in our station, we know the process of doing something uh and the policies and the same goes for them coming to assist us, it's gonna all be the same, so there's no, well, we don't do it that way, it'll all be the same.
So it's in our special meeting, we talked about the e-scheduling software, we weren't sure how to make the motion, but we wanted to make the motion. We'd already approved e-schedule software, but e-time's different, better for a little bit more money, uh right?
Yes.
So I spoke to Elena and if it's alright to jump to that right now, uh I'd like to make uh entertain a motion to approve the e-sparper funds in the amount of three thousand and twenty one dollars above the amount approved in January of twenty twenty four for e-scheduling software. Thank you, you have a second, thank you, Megan, further discussion on that?
Let me see which amount.
Eight? I don't, you give me a minute and I'll bring it up.
It doesn't matter here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'll, do you want me to keep looking, okay. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poser of sessions, carries, so that's done, thank you.
All the phone lines in the police department are now recorded. So keep that in mind.
I'm assuming that's also policy driven?
Yes.
Okay, good, good.
So all the phone lines are now uh recorded, we have the situation, um and the question was then raised, are your phone lines recorded?
Yeah.
And then we called Jackie and said, we need to get this done now.
So. Good.
Um so that is done. Um well, the pressure went to data master school at um Albany County Sheriff's, um as they have training, what we're sending people out there are yearly mandated trainings. Um like the sexual harassment and all those trainings have been assigned, um so they're out there on uh the police one training software. I have a meeting with a scheduling company on Friday to configure everything. And then hopefully it'll get moving forward.
Do you have any questions for uh John?
Yeah, very thorough.
Thanks, John, any else, John?
Uh just the other
Will be in executive session, yeah.
No, the floor, so. Take cameras later.
Yes, we'll we'll do that, um probably at the next spec- the special meeting, yeah, thank you, well, buddy reminded me. Uh looking for motion to approve the police department report? Uh Deb and Bobby, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poser of sessions, carries, thank you. Mark, code enforcer report.
Uh so yeah, my report's there with the numbers and things like that, not a whole lot has changed except for the demolition that was done this week. That's a long-term process, we probably started five years ago. We gave we gave the owners an opportunity to try and fix up the building from the original inspection that was done by an engineer.
Yep. Yep.
Ended up having round.
It looks way better, even though they still equipment it off.
Uneventful too, right, Mark?
No.
Semi, semi eventual.
What 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 happened?
Well, we it's it's being covered and um our our police are investigating and following up on it.
We'll talk about that. We'll talk about it later.
So we'll we'll discuss things tomorrow. Not not quite the public meeting type discussion material, so, alright.
Semi. Semi. Went well, thanks.
Mark, how much time did you spend this week and last week with that unsafe structure? Was that like half half of your week, most of the week, like?
Uh spent a little bit of time there, you know, we were obviously getting things going. Uh trying to make sure that the owner wasn't uh being obstructive.
Mm-hmm.
Um things like that, yeah, you know, pre-demol meetings. So we've had a couple of, you know, we met one time uh to just with the highway department, they kind of come sort of like a plan and then um we met with the dance halling uh uh Wednesday and then called them again on Friday and um then obviously we were there for the
Okay. Someone had was about to ask Mark something, so my apologies for that.
I did have a question for them.
Yes.
Any movement for our
Did that guy do all the property?
Yes.
So it's all his name?
Yeah.
Just curious.
Yes, it is. Even though I think it's been many years, I think it's been a few years since the taxes have been paid.
It goes to the devil or? How's that work?
Um
Need that the the county pays off, you know, the county
Yeah, it 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 will get re-lebied. And then, no, no, that's the process.
Yeah.
We'll have an initial thing, in fact, we have a bond resolution to cover the initial costs. We re-levy it, the county makes us hold and the county legally goes after. That's been the process for I think about four different buildings over time that we've done for various reasons, unsafe reasons. Somebody else have a question for Mark?
Just for any movement with Farrar, is that, is there any movement with Farrar's building there, is that
Yeah, I expected another one of the apartments today, um. So yeah, I think it's
Nope. Nope.
So the he's actually doing the repairs?
Yes.
Um
Yeah, he's repaired, uh uh there's still the porch issue, there's a window issue, no more apartment.
Is there a timeframe deadline for him to get it done? Because it seems like it just keeps going and going and going.
Well, this is a project that has been a C in progress, so and you know, from my viewpoint, now that we getting some progress, we that's for bring the things into compliance.
Okay, but it was reasonable, a year for you, can we give him a timeline?
Well, it's been it's been a hundred years, although with at least hours, it's probably
We had he had two years of uh an arrest line.
Yeah, according to
To me, it should have been as soon as he came back and he should have been told either fix this or there should be some kind of court date that he came back into, there should be some finding in place until he fixes the building. I mean, how long does it have to go on for somebody to have a derelict property and take care of the property and all waltz in, okay, everything's so, I'm gonna work on it now. I think you have to set some guidelines for people that they have to take care of the property within a reasonable amount of time.
Go to that.
Well, and that was an issue and we discussed it another time, because once the warrant was put out, there wasn't much more to do, so
Mark, was what's if we were gonna try to force things or penalize things more, is that a local law thing or is that a court thing or?
I'd need to consult with Elena and I figure out what to best do.
To me, that he shouldn't even get a C O until he's had his complete compliance and the other the other deficiency, because if he has a porch that's falling off, isn't that a safety hazard for the the tenants that he's putting into those apartments? And people on the street? Yeah.
Good questions? Alright.
Or can we not order the the glass for that church building in Church Street, what is his number, I can never remember?
I followed up on that, he uh they just had ordered the part because they didn't have any in stock and it should be in this week. They have to put a in the specs, they got you, there's a divider between the two windows. It's a single window now, but the specs were for two different pieces of glass.
Okay. Alright. Um Mark has developed an review with myself and our attorney. The starting point, so this is an example property, um this is going to be uh what the first um uh letter delivered is going to be related to the vacant and abandoned building registry. Um gives very clear date timeline. Um this is all right out of the local law that we approved. Um and this type of thing would be also as per the local law and this is what they have to fill out, so we've reviewed this, Elena you spoke, um gave us some comments as well, so this will be starting once you're free from inspections and unsafe structures. And we're not ready for tonight to show the net, the next form related to junk vehicles, but that's also the way.
I have a list, I have a list of the junk cars and also photos of one of the properties. Only thing I have to do now is just to reconfirm the house numbers because some of the houses didn't have numbers on them.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Heather.
Hey, Mark, just out of curiosity, who do you, who do you send it to? Like is it the county provider, whoever that's on the tax bill or something or the last?
Part of it, yeah, yeah, we have, there's some research involved with like uh, so this, that's act, that's an actual property that I put on there and it's still in the original homeowner's paint, but I know that it's been uh foreclosed on. So I have to do some research through the county records. I need to get, I need to get access. I tried to go in there today. I used to be able to use Tony's login, but it's no longer letting me do that, so.
Do you have Tiffany's number?
Do I have Tiffany's number?
Tiffany has been able to get me access to things pretty quickly.
Yeah, I have Tiffany's.
Oh, you probably, yeah, you're probably right over there.
I think he has her number.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Yeah, that makes sense. She's been, I can't imagine taking over for Tony who did that for so long, but she's been awesome for everything I've had, so. Pass that on to the town supervisor.
Is this enforceable against bank-owned properties?
Should be.
Yeah.
It's just getting to the banks and then once you find out the banks, it's getting into the right department.
Yeah.
We did it, it was vacant, abandoned and foreclosed. So if they're in foreclosure, that's also part of it as well.
Would, do you think this would spice it along for the banks to auction the house off or not sit on it forever or they don't care?
The process, I, because I do a lot of refering work, so I have a property right now somewhere in Silver County that is being auctioned off in April and the foreclosure process started in twenty eighteen.
Oh, that, that, what we were just looking at, is that go for county-owned buildings, whether the county owns and runs the building or whether the county owns it to, to auction it off?
We don't have, we can't do anything against the county. They're exempt from our code.
This is the local law, just pull up on our website. This is the local law we're talking about. So. Alright, anything else, Mark? Any other questions for Mark? Looking for motion to approve the code enforcement report?
Motion.
Thank you. Need a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poser's obsessions. Carrie's. Great, thank you, Mark. Treasure report, anything you guys wanna highlight or ask about?
I'm sorry, what's that? Were you asking me?
No, it was a.
West sixty-third street on Millet.
Oh.
On the bottom of the active yellow part.
West sixty-third street. Oh, oh west, that sounds like New York City.
Yeah. It was west, it was west sixty-third.
Is that the Upper East Side or? I think it, I think that's how in Hell's Kitchen, isn't it?
Did you say Upper East Side?
I think that's how in Hell's Kitchen, right?
Yeah, it's quarter of a cent. I'm not sure. Yeah.
Oh, for that.
They came, they came to talk to us. Really? They did like a whole like raid, like helped with this, like.
John, you get a chance to look at the Congress Park guy.
I'm just having, he's made the, like, we've been in a talk with him. It was really nice. Really?
Yeah. Start parking, rock face, rock directions.
I love horror shows.
And one thing, our park, terrible park kitchen. I don't have to expensive neighbors. In the corner of the.
He's awesome.
Do you have any other questions about treasure report?
No.
Corner River and Third.
For the treasure report? No, I know, I know what you're saying.
I'll make a motion.
Alright, thank you, Bobby. Need a second?
Thank you. Second.
Thank you, Megan. Further discussion?
Can we get a copy of the fourth quarter, quarter report for state and federal?
Yes, I will ask that to Denise. Um. What was that, fourth quarter?
Yeah, she submitted New York State and federal fourth quarter.
Okay. Yup. Do that right now. Alright, um. Looking for uh, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Poser's extension? Alright, Carrie's, next report, clerk deputy clerk, anything closely you wanna mention or highlight?
Um, just that Debbie's been really great.
What's that?
Debbie's been really helpful.
Awesome, awesome.
She's a lovely lady.
She sure is, that's great. Looking for motion to approve the clerk deputy clerk report?
Motion.
Thank you, second? Thank you, Megan. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Poser's extensions. Carrie's, Howie departments. Bobby, Kenny, anything you wanna share?
Busy.
Yes.
I met with Kevin today, we marked up some trees in the park that we would like to see some work done. I spoke with Rick Hart from the county, who was still willing to help us even though he's a county employee. So it's just, we gotta work around their schedule, you know, they're, they're busy as heck right now, so um, you know, and he, he suggested we wait till the ground freezes solid before, especially over on that side of the park where it's gary black.
It is soggy, I, I don't know whether to tell you after, after you called me, Kenny, and I'm wet, it's definitely wet still.
Um, other than that, we helped mark out with the demo, you know, just because a lot of nuisance storms, whether it just be a little bit of ice on the road or a little bit of snow that we have to clear off, you know. I'm busy.
Anything else?
Remind me to get with your penny about imperium parking signs.
Okay. I, I think I'm good, that's all I got.
Looking for motion to approve it?
I am.
I'll give that to Doug in a second, Deb. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poser's obsessions. Carrie's, great. Uh, let's see there, where were we? Sewer report?
Kenny, my only question is um the pump station on Lyman Street that we had, did you get told if I went down with you? Is that the belt situation any better or no?
Yes, much better. Um, we've had seaward out there a couple times, they had to pull, I don't know if you wanna post the pictures.
I don't wanna post pictures.
No, no, you don't wanna post the pictures.
But uh, they had to pull like a four-foot long wad of rags out of this pump that just, and it's, it's like, it's kitchen towels, it's bath towels, it's trash bags, it's.
Next week Kenny and I are gonna try to put together some sort of video to put out there to be like, people, hi.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I saw it.
If you care about not raising taxes, then please take care of our sewer system.
It'll just be your.
Don't flush four-foot long rags down your drain, dog.
So, so we, we've had seaward out a couple times to tear the pumps apart because we're not, we're not able to tear the pumps apart. So, and then we spent last Friday, we spent the whole day down on Lyman Street and we cleaned the whole flat well with our van truck, which was.
Oh, you did cleaning tank?
Which was a nightmare because it's just, it's, you know, it's almost thirty feet deep and you've got guys standing in a little open hole with a, a vacuum trying to suck all that stuff out, it's just, it's sketchy, so. It's nice, huh?
Coming back to that back truck purchase, that was, that was great.
Yeah, man. It's the best purchase.
Alright, any uh, anything else?
Yeah.
Looking for motion to approve the sewer reports?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Need a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Poser's obsessions. Carrie's. Water report, Megan, anything you wanna highlight?
No, I don't have anyone highlight. We need more money.
We need more money. That is, that is the case.
We'd like a, a new pump, but.
I'm gonna be meeting with.
We need a van, I mean, there's so many things that we
Yeah.
just keep talking about, so.
Last, last month we approved um hopping on to the three M Dupont larger settlement. Um, Dave Engel and I are gonna meet with the lead attorney who's gonna be up in our neck of the woods next week while I'm on uh school break, so hopefully I'll have more of an idea
We need.
um, about how much we could get from that and where it will go, but I think putting some of that into our water needs is going to be essential.
The dehumidification unit, like there's just so many things.
Dehumidification, a new vehicle and maybe a backup pump is.
Yeah. That'd be great.
That would, that would completely change things from us having to be petrified and have to respond to a crisis to having way fewer crises on the radar and being prepared in case.
I have less anxiety.
Maybe getting enough money to fix the water tank up on Rogers Avenue.
Yup.
That'd be great.
Yup.
Is, is it possible on, on the on the revenue report to look at where we are relative to budget? On water revenue, because I know that would work. If I look at these numbers, I don't know what they mean, I don't know what, are we losing money? Are we making money or?
This is. Yeah.
We also should compare the last.
This is just something I started to do just to keep track of other um, other water income, but Doug, if there's, if there's something more specific that would help, I'm game to make that happen. Anything in these reports, these grids just emerged over time.
Well, I compared the last year or particularly compared the budget.
Okay.
Because if we've under budgeted or over budgeted, we talk about money.
Right.
Is the money coming in or not coming in? The question is why or why not?
A lot of that typically comes around budget season, which we're about to get.
But we should see it on a live basis. I mean, you just take the budget, you can break it out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just where are we?
The, the only problem with that is that some expenses come later, so it, it's not always an honest thing, but.
I'm only looking at revenue.
What's that?
Only revenue, not expenses.
Revenue, okay.
So this right here is just, is just.
Yeah, they're just water sales for water.
But that's there. That's just for the pool guys.
That's all that is.
Well, I think what Doug's asking is if we know, we estimate that over our three billing cycles for water, when we bring in X, what did we actually bring in?
Okay.
Yes.
That's what you want, that's easy.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
That's easy, yup.
But it's, it's tough with that too, the like whole market value.
Who paid, who didn't pay and what's outstanding, right?
It's tougher with a larger seller because you're not really sure, like if you have a pump that costs fifteen thousand dollars, it's going to like, it's not going to be like, this is our, our budget and it goes up and down.
No, I'm only looking at revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm game to make that happen, yup. And that will help us as we're planning for budget stuff too as well, yeah.
Yeah, because we raise rates and a lot of budgets.
Yup.
Right, how much did that help us, right?
Yup. Yup. Yeah, and if you guys have any ideas on this, a lot of these things we just kind of thought of, I mean, the, the arrests and uh calls thing on the police department. We, we, I just added that a couple of years back and it helped, so. Alright, I'm looking for motion to approve the water department report?
Motion.
Thank you, need a second?
Second.
Thank you, that was Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poser's extension? Carrie's minutes, we have the January tenth regular meeting minutes, is there anything needs to be changed?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented for each of the meetings if the rest of it is for.
Alright. We have to do one at a time unfortunately.
Yup, January tenth, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Megan and, and Deb, but Megan.
I used to kill zombies before you came back.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poser's extensions. Bobby, you wanna make the same for January tw- second?
I make a motion for January second, special meeting.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poser's extensions. Bobby?
I make a motion for the February fifth, special meeting, accept them as presented.
Dan, you wanna second that as well?
Second.
Alright, perfect, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, poser's extensions. Carrie's, all carried, alright. Trustee reports, Deb?
Um, okay. I was, nothing uh with my department particularly, although I promise, I promise, next month I will have the transportation thing worked out in a charter and something that you can look at. Maybe even before then, I'll send it out email. But um, certainly, certainly ready for next budget anyways.
We'll probably meet before then, don't worry.
Uh, one, one minute on.
We'll probably be meeting before then, don't worry.
One minute on that, Deb. Elena, if we're gonna change our policies and costs for how the transportation works, is that something we would put together and do via resolution?
If it's cost, yes.
Alright. So that will be part of the process of adopting that. We'll have to do it via resolution. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, um, just a cup, a couple things I just wanted to bring up in general, can I do that or you just want to do later?
Fire away, fire away.
Okay, um, I was wondering, yeah, when, are we gonna work next steps for the parking study? Is that on here?
I'd say that on a discussion point later in the meeting, but.
Okay, okay. Oh, I got a um, a, a message from uh Jackie Houghton today that said she's not coming tonight because of the power outage on Rogers Avenue.
Yup, that's another thing I follow on.
And um, she's still working on uh, on the petition and a plan to set up a meeting date with us, um. And she has all the signatures so that we can together draft a letter to the county and get that fixed.
I'll try to reach out to her next week.
County or national grid?
I was gonna say.
It's the county, but.
Um, no, that, it, it's not just county, but if we can go to state uh centers and representatives, I'm.
The power thing?
Yes.
I think you just send a letter to the state public service board rather than.
Whoever we consent to, we will definitely do it, yes.
That's how you've got success in dealing with that, right, Kevin?
Yeah. Who is that to, Kevin, which one?
The state public service board.
Thank you.
Yeah, the public service commissioner.
I think we're gonna add in the light in front of St. Mark's Church and the one in front of Maggie's Beauty Shop that's been out for two years.
I think you need to mention there's somebody on oxygen on that street that requires.
So the officers are gonna go around and collect data on all the outlights because I actually went on to national grid.
Mm-hmm.
And you can gladly report it, but if you go on their site, what's not reported is out, so it's a mute issue.
We reported the one at Maggie's Beauty Shop and the one on St. Mark's numerous times.
As of, as of last week, it's not on there.
The nice thing is.
Because if no national grid guys around in the area.
Part of the news.
Like, I, I think I showed, I might have showed Bobby or somebody, um, but I found the site where you have to go on a national grid and you click on it.
And the officers are gonna go around at night
Good.
and get all the poll numbers and then I'm gonna go through, or actually, the other person's gonna go through and that's gonna be part of our job, it's like cutting.
Good.
And add, hey, this light's out and then after a certain timeframe, then we'll send a thing out and says, you're not doing your job, get it done.
Alright.
Also too, on, on the form that National Grid provides, if you don't report it right, like if it's out completely, you check that off. If it's low voltage, you check off the low voltage uh section.
I don't think they use a form anymore, that's the problem.
Yeah, you can't fax that form anymore to uh.
Fax, what's that? Yeah, no, you can fax it.
No, you have it, but they have the online because I said.
Yeah, but you go, you just go online, you just click it and you report the outage and then you get a confirmation number.
You don't have an option anymore to get the form, you have to.
Kevin, nineteen eighty gold, it'll get faxed.
Yeah, you gotta do it on.
Well, you could, you could scan it and then you mail it.
Yeah?
Sure.
Deb?
Okay, I wanna just uh throw a couple things out there. Um, the, the flags, is anybody on the board coordinating or do we need to or the, the
What flags? Yes, I am, I am.
Um, banner flags, or, okay.
Veteran bands.
Do you know yet where you're putting them? Because people have had suggestions.
Well, no, they can have, they had their times of suggestions, the suggestion time is over.
Okay, I'm just telling you, I'm just.
No, we had, we, we met and no, that's, no, it's been decided, I mean, we only have, we have a hundred and thirty-two poles in, in the village there that we earmarked for the banners.
Okay.
And some are gonna be able to be two-sided. Um, we're, we're actually, we're limited based on the, the height of some of the poles and the bracketing that they have, they order, they have to order.
Yeah.
Um, but no, I, and I say we, I mean, the, the legion is.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, I just wanted to make sure, I said, people ask me questions, so.
Yup.
Yeah, no, um, but that's, um, and you know, like people gotta understand, they're not gonna get to, they don't get to pick what pole their, that their father or, you know, relative got to.
That's what we, we talked about that before.
Because that was, that was part of the.
That would be insane.
Pardon me?
That would be crazy to try and do that.
No, I'm saying, no, it's done, if they're doing, the legion's doing it by the, the war era and, and that's all.
Oh, that's great.
They're in charge of the United States.
Yeah, they're, they've got it all set, how they're doing.
That's cool, that's cool.
How many do we have? How many are, how many are?
I don't know how many applications, I mean, they accepted applications uh February, uh, what was it, the last Saturday was the, the second date they had.
Okay.
Um, everything has to be to the Husig banners, um, uh, doc, not Husig banners, I'm sorry, yeah, the, um.
Maybe making?
No, it's uh the name of the company who's doing the, the banners, um.
That's not.
Has to be them by March first.
Okay.
So everything's gotta be ordered.
Oh, that's great. That's great.
Do you know, and the only, the only question I've had is I thought, did you include John Street polls for the, for those?
I have no idea. Yup.
Okay, because it's when we do the holiday banners and.
Oh yeah, no, we understand, no, the, the, just so you understand, the banners are only gonna be up from Memorial Day and they're coming down Labor Day. These banners are going, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, so we're not gonna interfere, we're not gonna interfere.
Oh, okay, I.
Oh.
They're not gonna interfere with, with the holiday banners and, and holiday.
Oh, good, oh, good.
And they won't get aged out of weather.
And then they won't fade too fast.
Right, right.
Because that was the other thing, if they're up all the time, they.
That's how, because you, I, I drove Detroit the other day and I looked, some of the ones in Troy, you can't even recognize the faces on, on the banners because they're gonna, so yes, that's, that's.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
They thought that out really well and the legion's all on, all over it.
Any else?
You know in our zoning laws, against our zoning to put.
Anything on a poll?
Yeah.
Villages is out from the zoning laws, as a legal expert, we're good.
Okay.
What does, what does it say, post no bills or something?
I wanted to throw out the idea that we should be working on a comprehensive plan and I just wanted to say those two words, comprehensive plan.
There's a push from, there's a push from the SIPWIG to try to get, that's the, the Community Participation Working Group for Water, Town and Village,
Sue, comprehensive plan, two, three words.
to try to get the company to put forward money for the town and village to work on a comprehensive plan, whether that materializes into something, who knows, but.
Because that, that guides everything, with all this stuff happening, that guides everything.
Yup. And that, and, and again, back to twenty seventeen, back to the previous mayor's credit, they had done a lot of work to get to that step, the LWRP. Getting there, that stuff arrives around the same time PFO had happened and, you know, and as I look back at that now, there was so much momentum that was just crushed.
Oh, I know. That's when I was working at the Eastwick, so yeah, I know.
Yup, yup.
Well, on that, um, one of the benefits of New York Forward is the first month or so, they're gonna do a a profile of the community, it's gonna be quite intensive actually, and that could be the basis to into a comprehensive, it should be. You're gonna have active data, best data, if you present it, then we can expand that out.
Yeah. Okay.
But I I don't think we should wait two years and do it by the end of the plan.
No, no, and there is, there is some stuff, um, Camoin was the company that, um, the previous administration was with. Um, do we?
Camoin, yes, not Le Berge, Camoin.
Yes, correct. And based out of Saratoga, so I, I, if, can you help me dir- can you maybe direct me to, um, Clarissa, sorry.
What?
Can you, if I come in one day next week, can you direct me to or to where some of those files might be or can we, I have no idea.
Oh my gosh, you're looking for.
Yeah.
For the coi- some of the, I mean, yeah, whatever we put together, I mean.
The planning documents.
I've been, I've been.
Doesn't have to be this week.
I've been there the last couple of weeks, I've been looking through those, they're right on the shelf.
For what?
Are they? I have no idea where anything is.
There's there, those weird spiral plasticky spiral ones, just piled up.
It's annoying.
What?
Okay, I'll come in and, never mind.
Top top wooden shelf, I think, actually, is is where that one is.
Okay.
And the other, the other thing is, is uh to, if I wanna put a stop sign someplace or I wanna have a stop sign put someplace.
Local law.
Okay, I saw you.
Which you're on that committee, right?
Yup.
Where are you looking to do it?
Um, on the southwest corner of Abbott and Wilder. Right now, it's a three-way stop. It should be a four-way stop or say, uh, also, people will drive slower going up Ball Street if they had to stop, a stop sign. Because it's getting insane. And that's the only way I can think of to slow down Ball Street.
Yeah, Upper Ball Street, especially if you're driving.
Where are you talking, are you talking, there's a stop sign from this direction?
Oh my gosh, I I have to go the direction.
Abbott, Wilder.
There is no stop sign, Rob, where your arrow's going, right, go, come back a little bit.
My, my Terry's, my Terry's house.
Yeah, no, right right on Abbott Street, on the, on what Deb's saying, right there, there's that, there's no stop sign.
Stop sign right there, I, my Terry's, your Terry, where it lives?
That's fine.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, right there, there's no stop, no stop sign.
The, I don't know, right, where. So people come flying down Abbott and then they turn a left on Ball.
Intersection of Abbott and Wilder, I can get you more.
What direction?
Uh, which direction?
The opposite of that arrow, Rob, the opposite of that arrow.
Is it southbound?
Yeah, turn, turn the.
So it's it's coming from here this way, from up here.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
That is southbound.
Right.
Yeah.
From.
Southbound on Abbott and Wilder.
From Abbott into into Ball, right, right.
Abbott. Wilder.
It's the north, it's the southwest corner.
You're right.
Yeah. Um, Abbott continues into Ball Street, which is more confusing, but.
It is, it it is.
Um.
No, Abbott, well, doesn't, but it also leads into Abbott Street, so.
Well, the local law though, just needs to say where it's going to be, so I.
Okay.
And it's also dangerous because, um, if people don't know that there's no stop sign there, they assume it's a four-way stop. So they don't stop when, that makes sense?
Yeah, there is.
Right here, right?
Looks like it should be a four-way stop, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
You are.
So people think the, like, stopping on Abbott Street, but no.
Right, because the other, the other intersection on on Abbott Street and I, is is a three-way, four-way actually, because you come down Berchard, Abbott.
I'm gonna send you this picture.
Okay. Which one? Yes.
Classic, is is a four-way.
Yes.
They were all put in when.
When the Route twenty-two project, they were all put in and they were, they were put in, that was haphazardly put in and there's some down in Second Ward the same way.
Um, I'm gonna, Deb, I'm emailing you and Elena that picture so that you guys can prepare that local law, same local law procedures, everything, so.
Okay, so Elena, you could just, you just substitute the.
Yeah, I just gotta find the local law that has the list of all the stop signs, because technically it's an amendment to that one to add a stop sign.
I'll find that in a moment.
Okay.
While we move on. Um, great, thank you Deb.
Let me know if I can, oh, edit it.
It's easy enough.
Uh, why is my mouse not working? Uh, who's next? Uh, Kevin?
Oh, by the way, the transfer station, uh, I went up there a couple of weeks ago and Chuck told me that all the garbage is flying over the place. And County Waste now does our our tipping instead of, uh.
TAM, right?
TAM or Casella. And so they changed the lock on the transfer station, but the drivers never got the memo. So they weren't going in picking up our garbage, so we rectified that and Kenny gave us, or I think Bruce was on duty then and got the new combination and I guess they were back because it was all cleaned up some time.
Yeah, I, yeah, yup, they've been, they've been up there. Um, I actually sent my guys up to pick up all the crap that go all over the place.
Yeah.
Can you send me the new combination?
Four zeros.
Oh.
Pretty simple.
I'm telling you.
We've changed it to like two zeros and one zero.
No, right, I'm.
What would I have to do for this?
That's a lot of money.
Four way stop sign.
Great for so much money.
What a loss of luck.
No, it's twenty-five.
We're gonna shift.
We've always lost our transport.
No, I'm not.
Like at some point in time.
I'll work through it. Yes.
There's an old log, you know, a place car, nineteen thirty, it's all written in three galleys.
Deb, you're on the local law committee, correct?
Yeah.
Her suggestion to, is to go through and find all of the various local laws on stop signs and put them all into one, so it's in one spot.
Luckily, most of them are all in one local law, there's one that has eight or less.
So that's a nice feature.
Yeah.
That's what I was looking for.
We didn't waste money.
I haven't.
We did local laws for in Second Ward, didn't we, Bobby?
That's the one I I just found, yes.
Which I, that's the one.
Okay. We did all the law for stop sign in Second Ward this past year.
There's.
Yes.
Uh, that was the twenty fifteen one, I'm gonna second.
So this past year.
No, this one's older, but there's one that lists like forty stop signs, right, that's the one that we did in Second Ward, that was Second Ward.
Uh, instant, yes.
Was I just.
Second.
No, I sent you the picture of it.
Okay.
There's, I, Deb, I just sent her a picture of the, all the local laws we put together, there's one in two thousand eleven related to installing various stop signs throughout the Second Ward.
I mean. Okay.
That's got a long list.
Oh, that's the one.
That's probably, yeah, that's the one, two thousand eleven, number two.
The one, well, Second Ward, no, I was in Second Ward though.
Yes. No, this is not Second Ward, that's Fourth Ward, right? No, Third Ward?
Okay. Oh. What, what, fourth ward?
The.
Fourth. Now, that might be third over there, is that fourth or third?
All right, let's figure that out.
All right, moving on, all right. Kevin, did you have anything else?
Uh. Just as a point of reference, so.
Oh, no, I, as far as the uh eminent domain, uh, cantios, I talked to a lady in New York D. Uh, I put together a binder with the uh report from the private investigator, all the um picked, I took pictures of all the locations and all the properties and also put in here the appraisals and a couple of sections of our comprehensive plan, which identifies the cantio property as future use for the village. I think the only thing I I don't have in here is, I think Elena said a letter stating what the purposes would be for the eminent domain.
Yeah, so the next steps in the process are essentially to call for a public hearing, but as part of the public hearing, we have to identify what the purpose, the public purpose is of acquiring these properties.
Okay.
So, I mean, it could just be parkland, you you know, it it doesn't have to be an extravagant plan right now, but we have to notify the public as to why we would be spending public funds to purchase these properties with a public use of these. So that, before we can really call for a public hearing, I think that that has to be identified and then we can call for a public hearing and there's essentially like findings that need to be made afterwards and that would be a major part of it.
We probably have a lot of that through the various plans for both the the greenway going through there and.
Yeah, I have it posted here.
Yeah, so those already exist, I mean, those go back to the LWRP from twenty seventeen, twenty fifteen?
Yeah, there's even one earlier than that.
I also put the record from Delaware Engineering in here on the wall that's collapsing, so I don't know if that's, it could use as part of the process.
Yeah.
And actually, uh, and delay the New York Forward process, may put that property in play.
Yeah. Yeah.
For grant three years.
And that may be the one.
The only thing we were thinking you were wanting was like a walkway down or maybe some park, or like a.
Yeah, yeah, and we got.
Yeah.
Just green space, it was just space, yeah.
And so, yeah, green space, whatever, whatever, you can do whatever would be required, do you know what I mean, as long as it's consistent with that, but okay.
We pass one way.
And gr- greenway access, yup, yup. All right. That was another project mention, I've been.
So.
The other, uh, a local business had a question about one of us, the property. Whether, if we take ownership, whether he is right on the line and he wants to put a deck out from his property.
Yeah.
Airspace, yeah.
Would the village be able to, after taking that property, be able to convey any of that property in hand, or is that a sticky wicket?
It's a very sticky wicket because
Yup.
once it becomes village property, it becomes a constitutional issue to sell it or otherwise give it away.
Yeah.
Like, it's a gifting of public funds, do I have to use it kind of a thing?
No, there's like a whole section in the constitution related to public parkland being conveyed to.
Private.
It's not that it's impossible, it's just that it's not an easy process.
Could release it to him on a ninety-nine-year-old, who you're wrong in places, like, again, Hong Kong?
Nope, no, not without making it also available to the public.
No.
Right.
That solves that, so I think in his plan, he's gonna take the deck out the back instead of.
Yeah, he does.
Yeah.
All right. Any else, Kevin?
Uh, no.
All right, thank you.
Does airspace count that's not touching the ground?
Yeah.
I think a lot of man, air.
Depends on what's over.
Just saying.
See, any other thing?
New York City, you're home.
Uh, yeah, two uh, two things, just a point of interest on the stop sign thing, I, just working off a memory of reviewing the local laws a while back, there's very little in the local laws about stop signs outside of that. A very exhaustive list in Second Ward. I'm assuming that most of these stop signs have been there for a hundred years, I mean, I I can't imagine the one at Muncle and High Street by you and I, Rob, has always been there and so, um, trying to find records of all the stop signs is just.
What, what we'll probably do is just a local law to add it, but my conversation was that at some point in time, I don't know when that will be. Ideally, when you look at a municipality's code, it has like section one thirty-nine is titled this and then it has everything, so then when you wanna make changes, you don't just do a local c- local, a whole new local law, you amend that local law and it's much easier to cite to a violation.
S- so should we make a local.
So, at some point in time, it would be nice to go through and.
Should we make an updated local law that avoids all the previous stops and just literally for twenty pages lists all the, now, okay.
Yeah.
You don't wanna avoid the local laws, you wanna incorporate, like, basically, like, re-designate a section of it. And then if there's certain local laws that, like we're talking about with the stop signs, we wanna consolidate them all into one section, so we're not necessarily looking to like change the local laws, it's really just a reorganization of the local laws to make it easier to follow.
But what if we don't have, but what if only, I mean, I don't think it'd be an exaggeration to say maybe only fifteen percent of the stop signs in the village are actually in the local laws, um.
Oh, I get what you're saying.
So my my question would be, do we?
To void it and just create a whole new test.
Do we just get rid of all the prior stop signs and also make one local law that lists all?
If we have somebody who can, um, inventory the stop sign.
I I know, I know a guy who drives around a lot. I was talking about Kenny, I said, I'm looking at Kevin, Jesus.
Um, the, there's a two thousand two local law, uh, that is a lot of parking and traffic control signs in Third Ward, so that may be another location, that may be the Muncle one.
I just for purposes of moving this forward, we do our own and then we look to that as like a long-term process to make a more comprehensive code, it's easier to follow.
But. Yeah, larger.
I don't think it makes sense to be too hard to list them all, like, I don't, I wouldn't even mind doing it, the problem's gonna be when you get like those obscure streets out like First Ward at the end of California Ave, turn left, no, like, you know.
It's also not just saying like, you have to put the direction that the stop signs are located in the intersection, if, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
But a lot of stuff.
It's kind of simple, it's.
I think we should, hey, whatever money they want to get that E E company, whatever, to.
If we. It's a lot of money, tens of thousands.
I know, maybe they would go funding or something. Really, if we have that and they took care of that, boy, we could cover meetings.
Uh.
What's a rough idea of what that costs?
I, because our clerk deals with that, so I.
A stop.
Are we talking like six figures kind of a thing or like?
For an initial, I would definitely say probably at least half of, like fifty thousand.
I feel like.
Are there grants for stuff like that?
Yeah, we'll maybe.
I'm sure there is.
I feel, I spoke to Andy about this because he does, um, where, it's not, is it Post and Kill? He does one of the ones over there.
Post and Kill.
Yeah.
They have it, they have all the stuff there. Yes, it took them a couple of years to do it, but it was like forty thousand or sixty thousand.
And Bronzler.
Yeah, but it's not something we we can do ourselves.
Known in, I think, all the village laws, uh, catalog of all.
No, but like, it was the money and it it's a lot of money, I mean.
But then also every time that you amend it, you have to pay for them to update it, so it's a continuing cost.
Oh, yeah. That's a deal for now, that's it.
Yeah, but then it's all there, anybody who wants to move into the area or assume the zoning laws are advanced.
Are they just?
Oh, yeah.
When they do that, are they just organizing them in a nice web format or are they actually advising you, like, you've got overlapping things here or is it just more?
So not so much overlapping things, but they definitely review it for typos or things that ma- maybe don't make sense. Because I've had stuff come back that's like, is this what you intended? Because we don't think this is what you intended and, you know, they do review it, but they're not gonna like compare it necessarily to other sections of your code and say
You can do it with AI.
this is conflicting.
So, right now, we'll take the cheap way and just put everything in a PDF form on the website, right?
Well, that's the thing, it goes on to the other thing, it's searchable. Now, it's not searchable.
In a sense, yeah. You just gotta do word searches, yeah.
Searchable PDFs?
Yeah, you just do word searches, but it, but you still have to know how to do word searches.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not the greatest search thing.
The E code stuff is, once you know the system, it's a very easy thing.
No, it's great, I actually zoomed to, um, research into some things we've talked about here, I've gone on other municipalities and
Yeah. Yup.
And I just find parking regulation section three and, you know, it's.
And, and to speak to people who come to the village and wanted to 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 make improvements, that when they go and they see the E code, it actually speaks to, you know,
It is great.
okay, the village has all the stuff laid out, so they can just go right there and figure out what they need to figure out, that helps along with development.
Well, and if, if, if you had E code, you could look at other municipalities have E code and see, oh, wow, we don't even have a section on trailer houses or something, we're just lacking, you know, you can see what's.
Some of them, yeah, they have a lot of their own policies up on E code as well.
Yeah, um, employee policies and, yeah.
Not obviously at all. Yeah. All right.
So the only thing I got is, uh, I'm trying to get this EAP thing set up, I had a meeting set up for Monday with a lady from Capital EAP. At the last minute, she, um, emailed me to cancel, uh, I don't know, some kind of personal problem, so. She asked, did she give me the can, I asked her to meet either yesterday or today, I would have liked to have had information for this meeting, but I haven't heard back from her, so I don't know what's really on there, but she's supposed to give me all the information and then, um, as we had texted the other day.
Yup.
Um, I put myself down as a contact.
Yup, these do.
Bobby, and I think that's, um, you know, I di- I don't know what they need contact, I mean, they're not gonna like call us up to discuss employee issues, but maybe, I don't know, um, so, working on that, trying to get that up and running, um.
Great, thank you.
Dan, were you working on a local law for downtown, uh, business space?
All the apartment stuff?
Yeah.
I made myself a note for that this month.
I started, brought it up a couple of months ago.
I just forgot, I'm also trying to get this, um, employee handbook up and running, it's such a gargantuan task, but Doug just sent me a comic interesting and, uh, I need to, actually Kenny, I think you mentioned you would help, stop over and talk about what what we do for vacation and sick, I mean, you all did dings it out, so that that stuff, there's also some, in talking to Denise, there's some, I I don't, they don't seem to be written anywhere, policies, like, I I didn't know for our salaried employees, we give that, we basically have a short-term salary continuation plan for six months, um. It's not written anywhere, I think it's, I think it's a good, like, if.
Say that again?
So, like, if you go on comp or disability, right, where you're out, you typically, there's a, there's, there's a very, very short-term thing that's just better known as sick time, where you have to burn your own time, but let's just say it starts at week two. From, so hypothetically, person breaks their hip or some, whatever, um, take the situation we had last year with the dog bite or something, the person's out for three, four weeks or whatever.
Sure.
After the second week, the village continues your salary as if you're still here, it's like a short-term disability, they call it short-term disability, but it's really sa- it's really a salary continuation.
It's not, it's not, it's not disability insurance, it's the village, we pay it all, we pay it all.
It's not dis- right. So, the, and that's not uncommon, that salary. Well, the salary continuation plans are are not uncommon, the only thing, and this should all be done in the, in in the handbook, that we should do is we probably should, it's a very de minimis amount of money to get a long-term disability plan, but when you sign up with a long-term disability plan, like the Hartford or New York Life or St. Narv, whoever's doing it, you can also sign up to do, I guess we'll call it vetting a short-term disability, so the village doesn't have to, an employee comes and says, I I'm gonna be out for six weeks because of whatever. None of us have to sit and figure out, is this a valid thing, is it, we gonna approve it, are we not gonna approve it? You basically farm that work out to the same company that does your long-term disability. They don't pay the claim, all they do is vet the claim based on the procedure or the policy and then they tell you, they approve it or disapprove it, so the employees, you don't have to get involved with doctors' notes, you don't have to get involved with confidential information. The insurance, the person submits whatever to the insurance company, the insurance company gets the medical records, they have a nurse or somebody who does these claims vet it. And then they in turn email probably you as the mayor and say, we approve, you know, Dan's, uh, short-term disability and the village makes the payment. Otherwise, we get stuck in the situation of trying to figure out, um, you know, none of us being, you know, medical professionals trying to figure out, is this a legitimate claim, is it not legitimate? Is it, should we approve it, shouldn't we approve it? It's better to farm that work out.
So, I almost lost my leg a few years ago, I did it at home, it wasn't worth it.
Where'd you find it? Where'd you find it?
Huh? It was still attached most of the time, so, um, and, so I went out, I was hurt and I went to the. It was still attached most of the time, so um and so I went out, I was hurt and I went to the, doing work at the time, and I said to Anne, I said, you know, what do I have to do? And she said, you're a salaried employee, we pay insurance on you. And so what happens is the village pays me my salary and they get reimbursed from the insurance company eighty-five percent of what they paid me.
Do we know who administers that public?
I think it's the Hartford, to be honest with you, because because I first started getting the checks for the pillage at my house and I was bringing them in to Anne at the time and I'm like, I'm getting these. I don't think we're supposed to cash these, and she's like, no, please don't, so.
Yeah, so so we, it sounds like we do have, and it sounds.
So there is something in the works, yeah.
So it sounds like we do have a short-term disability plan.
Well, I was out for almost eight months, I mean I had to use my vacation and sick time, you know, for first.
Right, for for a period of time, right?
For I had to use it all up first, I had to use my vacation and sick time first and then the village would say, that's it.
You know, you could talk to Denise and I won't, because it's a, you know, everyone knows who it is, but we did have an employee get injured on the job and was out for some time, so Denise will probably have some more information on that.
Yeah, I'd like to know who administers it, and typically those plans only cover the difference between what you're getting on dissip- New York State D V L and workers' comp. So if you're a worker's comp, you're getting two-thirds.
You could, you should also, yeah.
The village is only gonna cover that last third, you're not gonna double dip and get your money from workers' comp.
I would talk to Kenny, Denise and maybe anyone else who's had a similar experience and go from there.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, yeah, that's that's good, that's good to know, Kenny, so you think it's a Hartford, huh?
I think, I think so.
I think it is too.
I'd like to get the entire thing arranged in a in a handbook that covers.
Just from from what Anne told me, you know, years ago, she said the village pays insurance on their salaried employees. And they pay us our full salary and the insurance company reimburses them like eighty-five or seventy-five percent, I don't remember what it was.
Yeah. Denise will know that, cause she would have had to track that, so alright, thank you, anything else?
Yep.
No, then what I'd like to do is get a long-term setup that ends or that starts at the end of the short-term six month, they're very cheap.
Okay.
I mean it might be, I just priced one out for fifteen bucks a month per employee and that was for higher paying sort of white collar, it's not that expensive.
Alright, sounds good, thank you, Megan? Nailed it, standing ovation, Bobby?
You're welcome.
Um I was gonna talk about the court audits, I know that's in our next anyway, but.
Yep. I can move to that, so you can go for it.
I did the court audit, I audited both our judges um for both twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, everything was in order. Larissa has the uh the audit, the the report and you have to turn it into the uh state or something, right, Rob, there's a, right, Rob?
I'm trying to remember who it is, it's it's in the resolution, I'm trying to find the resolution.
Yeah, it's gotta, it's gotta be sent somewhere.
This is the resolution approving the village of whose falls justice court audit, is this what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Do you, are we, okay, jump to this right now?
Yeah, e- everything was in in fine, everything matched, everything was good.
So we've done this before, I actually got this from a a a previous one, we had done this um previously, this one is specific to January twenty-two to December twenty-two and January twenty-three to December twenty-three, which I fixed. Um and now therefore be resolved by the board of trustees, village duty falls, regular session, if you notice follows. The audit of the records of the village duty falls, justice court required under Uniform Justice Court Act section twenty nineteen dash A has been conducted and that the justice court audit report has been received by the board of trustees. And the fines therein collected have been turned over to proper officials as required by law. Village clerk is hereby directed to forward to the New York State Office of Court Administration a copy of said justice report audit and a copy of this resolution. So and you still want to offer that resolution and second it?
Do we, it, just out of curiosity, do we have a copy of that?
Yeah.
What's that, of the audit?
Yeah, I I was just curious, it said received by the board of trustees, I don't know.
It is in the presence of the board of trustees.
Oh, oh, okay, alright, I just.
You can pass it over, take, I actually want to look at that, yeah.
I'm just curious. Yeah, take a look at mine.
I'll make it, I'll make it one.
Yeah, I want to see.
Alright, um it's been offered by Doug, I need a second. And it's been seconded by Deb.
No, it's two years.
I'm just, I'm pretty stoked.
You got that? Doug, Deb?
How's our revenue?
What's that?
How's our revenues?
Our revenues are are um.
Big, big improvements?
Are 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 just just, I just wanna enlighten you a little bit, this is kind of uh mind-boggling. I thought at first when I was doing the audit, I I was missing something, but I wasn't. In twenty twenty-two, our our judges levied twelve thousand, I'm sorry, eleven thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars in fines. In twenty twenty-three, our judges levied fifty-three thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars in fines. And that was actually, I I think it was due to the fact, two things, um the first one was Route Seven, the the culvert collapsed on Route Seven out by uh.
We had to redo.
That's about years ago.
And it, no, that was, that was, no, it wasn't, it was last summer.
It does feel like it was years ago, but yeah.
And uh it got rerouted through the village, so on that one weekend, we wrote, correct me if I'm wrong, John, I think it was a hundred and twenty traffic tickets. And we wrote eighty or ninety in one day, right?
Eighty-nine in one day.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
I wrote thirty.
And the the also um when we, the our previous new chief, um he gave a directive to go out and write tickets and they listened. And they wrote a lot of tickets and we're we're reaping the revenue, but uh there's a lot of disgruntled uh people driving who drove through the village.
Oh, well.
But.
Hey, I just sat down with one and, you know, they were like, I get it, but I'm also still gonna keep doing it, and I'm like, okay.
Right. Right, we did, I know, we did, we we did. But to the, but to that point though, we, it it is, I mean, we pay the justices and the court clerk, you know, of X number of dollars. And we we hope that the revenue offsets that 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 out, you know, expense that we pay for salaries and clearly in in twenty twenty-two, it didn't cover itself. But it was it was rectified in twenty twenty-three, so now we need to be, have twenty twenty-four be about uh halfway between the two of them and we'll be okay.
No, that's good, that's good.
Chanda Zoo, ooh, I'm sorry.
Did the revenue in twenty twenty-three cover the expenses, the budget?
Oh god, yes, by, yes, the expenses are like approximately thirty-two thousand dollars, so yes.
Yeah.
I see any reports, why is there so many dismissals, like, I mean, look, you look at the sheets, like half of them are dismissed.
Yeah, I know, it's like I, in, well, and John can speak to that, I mean, that's the district attorney is.
No, if it's traffic, it's me.
Oh, but I mean, yeah, but you have, you can't just dismiss it, right, the.
It's judge.
Traffic, I do.
The judges have to.
I can please this. So that's on what?
You're just talking traffic, right?
Just traffic, the others, that's a D A's public.
But I did notice too, I and I just got today's, the this month's um report, Kevin, actually, and actually it was, it was January's report. And we took in in revenue just sixteen hundred and seventeen dollars, just just for, that's just for Harold's report, for Judge Collins' report for uh the month of January. So that's, yeah, sure.
Alright, so we still have a, we're 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 still discussing the resolution, we already have it all for a second, is there any more discussion on the resolution? And this is fine discussion, cause it's all related to this, so, uh hearing non-roll call vote?
Yep, uh trustee Shadig.
Yay.
Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Alter. Trustee Sour. Trustee Warren. Uh deputy mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And mayor Allen.
Yes.
Perfect.
Great, thank you, um Bobby, you were, is your report done, so we can clap for the rest?
Um, yeah, the only, yeah, the only thing I have, the other than that is the real term and.
Which we talked through.
Right, yes, so.
Alright, um so just under old business, we've finished all of this stuff already, we did the first two, we've moved on, so I'm moving into new business. What's that? Doug, did you report?
No, I've talked enough.
Oh. Did I miss you, did I just skip your name?
I think so.
Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, I'm 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 still trying to get us pushed through here, I'm sorry, it's my, you sure, you sure have nothing, cause I know you've added and done stuff, okay. Alright, thank you, alright, um water supply development, we have a resolution authorizing payment of invoices. Through third-party funded escrow account pertaining to the development of the new water supply wells and associated infrastructure. This is the sixth one of these that we have done, this is part of the escrow account uh being paid for by the companies. I gotta find that one. So this recaps the eighty thousand dollars of St. Cabana Honeywell recovering, this uh specific to the expenses. Now therefore be resolved by the board of trustees, that the board of trustees does hereby authorize the payment of invoices from Sterling Environmental Engineering, the amount of three thousand four hundred and thirty-four uh dot twenty-five. And Yoker's Tangling T P C in the amount of forty-five oh eight to be paid from the escrow account funded by St. Cabana Honeywell is provided for in the agreement authorized by the parties and approved by the village board back on May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Need someone to offer the resolution and second it? Thank you, I need a second?
Sucker.
Thank you, um again, this is the sixth one of these where we just have to do this regularly, uh we've already looked over the bills, we're fine, everything is good, any discussion?
Bobby Decker on there.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right, can you cross off Bobby Decker?
Thank you.
I missed that, I normally get those.
CBD, you got Megan on there?
Uh that's who we need, uh oh, we have eight.
Oh, yeah.
We gotta get my board.
Just you can just take it off.
Alright, yeah, cross them off, alright, okay, so um hearing no more discussion, roll call vote, please.
Uh trustee Shadig.
Yay.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Alter.
Yep.
Trustee Sour.
Yep.
Trustee Warren.
Yes.
Deputy mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And mayor Allen.
Yes.
Perfect, great.
The next item we have is a bond resolution for eighteen John Street, the reason it's coming up now is because they got it ready for us the day before the January meeting. And even though I am the king of last-minute entries to the agenda, I didn't get this one, I know, right?
No.
Um and then I completely forgot it on the uh special meeting on the uh eighteenth. So this is through Tom Myers, who we have done with all of our bonds in the past several years, it's the same format of what we've done before. This is a resolution authorizing the demolition of the building located eighteen John Street, uh the maximum estimated cost of a hundred thousand dollars and authorizing the issuance of a hundred thousand dollar bond to said village. Um to pay the cost thereof, this walks through all the procedures that we have done, the local laws, how we finance it, I'm not reading all of this. Uh da 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 da, it's very long, the resolution, which takes back to me, that should be published in summary form in the official newspaper of said village, village designated for such purpose together with the notice of village curbing substantially the forms set forth, paragraph, okay, we got it. So I need someone to offer the resolution and second it, which we don't have a spot for there, so.
No, it's right here.
Oh, it is right there, okay, is that the first page?
Yep.
Okay, so I need someone to offer the resolution and second it, Deb, offer, I need a second, Doug, thank you, um any discussion on this? Alright, roll call vote?
Um yep, uh trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Alter.
Yes.
Trustee Sour. Trustee Warren.
Yes.
Trustee Shadig.
Yay.
Deputy mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And mayor Allen.
Uh yes.
Perfect.
Thank you, passes, we also have, nope, that's not the one, uh I need a motion authorizing me to sign the change order, which for some reason I don't have on the screen. Um this is a change order to cover the cost of the um uh remove the pump fuel. Um and dispose of the oil and the labor, this is a change order of nine hundred and forty dollars to the original, it still is within our bond resolution, just an extra costs. So I need a motion authorizing the mayor to whatever says there. Deb, did you say it, Deb? Alright, this is this is just a motion right here.
Oh.
Um so Deb uh has uh offered the motion to authorize me to execute the change order of Dan Telling, Megan has seconded, any further discussion?
Wait, where?
It's on unsafe structure eighteen John Street, the second.
Oh, yeah.
Uh that was Deb and then Megan, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose or abstentions, carries, I don't remember, did I ask you, you have one, great, we're good, yes.
Do you need to sign it?
Yeah, I'll sign it and then we'll get it back to you. Okay, I know we're zipping, uh the next item is the Delaware Engineering one. Um I do wanna take just a quick moment to go through this, because this was kind of a new thing. Dan, Bobby, this is the uh Delaware Engineering item. This letter actually did a nice job of laying out that we received the administrative order from EPA, what the compliance is. This is uh for any ser- anyone who serves more than three uh thirty-three hundred persons of which we are just barely over. This is what the the task is gonna be, that they're asking for. Down here, it talks about the range, this was the original date, which I was like, please, we're dealing with P F O A, uh we're not in compliance, this is the scope of work. This is what Delaware Engineering is going to do for this. Um and down here on page two, we revise it with the operator and village assistants, respond to E uh E P, uh U S E P and D O H. They figured that uh Robert Flores is a senior scientist, would take approximately twenty-eight uh hours to do all this overall, four thousand dollars is the scope of this. So this is the proposal to get us back in compliance with the federal law on um for EPA. So with that in mind, I am simply looking for a motion that would authorize myself as mayor to sign this proposal. With Robert Flores and Delaware Engineering for four thousand dollars to bring the village into compliance with the A W I A. Thank you, Bobby, Deb seconds, it's the, just a bullet point right here. Right, uh S, yeah, that was uh Bobby and Deb, any further discussion?
Oh, yep, okay.
Is that a flat fee or they're just, it could vary?
Uh no, he expects it to be four thousand dollars, this is an expected fee.
Okay, so it could go up that 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 way, I agree.
It could go a little bit higher, but the we're, but right now we're improving to four thousand, if it goes higher, we we'll probably have to bring it up here for extra funds. I don't think Robert will do that, but based on what we've we've seen since before.
Is he, like, will that fee covering like modifications for the future, like knowing that things are gonna be changing?
No, we'll, but we'll have all of that work done, so it'll be much easier, in fact, when it's done, we can come to him for another proposal of, we have this, we have the next one coming.
Right.
What's it gonna take, and it obviously won't take twenty-eight hours, cause it's just a few changes.
Right.
Yeah, but it will be a new new sets of pumps, a new pump location, so there will be some work that's to be done. Uh any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, alright, thank you, carries unanimously. Um the next one is the landfill leachates proposal, which I also do not have up here, I think it. Oh yeah, just bring it up, that's fine. Yeah, you're, yeah, you can come up and do that while I'm on the ball.
You're well behind your two hours, you know, you paid your payments.
Sorry about the other nine. Yeah, you answered it, thank you.
You don't wanna study bond resolutions, so.
I have. No, I have to get like um old things you guys talked about in your last minutes and I need to like one or two current things you're talking about and then I can leave, that's like mine.
We have a thousand things, so.
We have to quiz you on the bond, we have to quiz you on the bond resolution.
I know.
If you need a copy of the agenda? If you need a copy of the agenda, it's right here, in the report, yeah, go for it.
Yes, yeah, I'm here, I'm here.
So this is the um proposal for Lobella to do the work, um this is the task that's as it's laid out. Um so it's, it talks about how they're going to have to go in and investigate, figure out what it is, they've made some um assumptions. Uh this is the total cost of the task right now. And down here on page two, this is everything they're assuming for at this point. So I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this proposal with Mark Millsport of Sterling Environmental and Lobella to troubleshoot and repair the force main music falls pump station, Megan?
I'm just reading.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I'll make a motion.
Alright.
Second.
Bobby, second, any further discussion, anything else you wanna read on the screen here? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that area of East Met or right away or the Village Road?
Probably all of those, actually, it's right by the Village Road, but it's also part railroad and I think that we've been in discussions a little bit with the railroad, but they're not very responsive, so we're just gonna do it. If they wanna have any issues on the fact that there's something leaking on their own property.
They're probably, they're probably causing it anyway.
Yeah, that's probably the case. Um alright, any other discussion? Since it's just a motion, looking for all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, alright, carries, um I did, I have an item to discuss with you, um superintendent Daley came up with the idea and approached um Mark Stodham as town supervisor, myself as mayor. Um they have had a PR person on and off who has been both helping with uh po- uh press releases and other items and also maintaining their website. Um it's something that helps them a lot, but it's not enough to justify a full-time position, but his idea was, what if we had one person hired, split services between the town, the village and um the school? And uh in their discussions, they have been proposing ways to um share the burden of the cost. And recently, he laid out a plan where basically, in a sense, whatever the salary dis- discussion would be. It would be a straight third of the salary covered by the town, village and the school, but the health insurance would be completely covered by the school. So in a sense, even though the salary distribution is forty-three percent, the total cost is more of a fifty percent school and approximately twenty-five. the total cost is more of a fifty percent school and approximately twenty five twenty five from the others. So a- as an example, um that he laid out, I can forward the signal on to you guys, um uh that would equal twenty so the district would pick up about fifty percent of the cost, especially if the higher needed family insurance, which tends to cost more. If we offered uh forty thousand and fifty four thousand based upon experience, that would approximately be between thirteen thousand and eighteen thousand for each of us. And then Huzik Falls would also pick up the cost of whatever the insurance plan was. Now our fiscal calendars are all out of whack, his is done. We're actually in the best spot right now to plan this into our next um budget cycle, which would start on June one. I wanted to bring up to you guys, what are your thoughts on this idea?
So he would be employed by the school, right?
He would be employed technically by the school.
For the health insurance, not even shared services.
Yeah, shared services agreement.
Yes, he would be HF- uh HFCS employed.
From my perspective, as the guy who's been updating the website and has been trying and never getting much traction on redoing website, we could use someone for a year or two to redo the website. Get it set up with WordPress, so that the clerk and other people in the office can update things. That is a no-brainer, we would fill him up easy with stuff to do. And also because of some of the higher profile things that are coming to fruition over the next year, from my vantage point, this is the perfect time to make this work.
Does this person already exist as a person?
No, it would be advertised, and we would be involved in the hiring process.
Okay.
Um
Just it's the health insurance isn't the only benefit, so is it? Is they're gonna cover like also like state retirement and everything else, or and we're just covering one-third of just the salary number?
Yep, yep, it'd basically be like a school employee.
Yeah, so that the fringe, all the fringe benefits then are basically Pat's problem, and then we just.
I can clarify that, but I will I will find out.
Okay, cause you got retirement there, and you got some other stuff, yeah, we don't wanna get into that.
Yeah.
How much is it?
No. If if he ballparked between a forty thousand dollar and a fifty four thousand dollar salary, that would be between thirteen thousand and eighteen thousand for each of us to divide that in in a third, and then the school would pick up the cost of the insurance on top of that.
I think that when you bet your spent on hiring, if you're gonna hire somebody to do, you're not gonna give all of our time rather than just send out press releases and not accomplish that.
In my mind, we could use it for about a year, maybe two, to redo the website, cause that's gonna be a lot of work. Uh what, I've been trying to do it, I've spent most of my time updating our current one, because we, there's things that need to be there that aren't. Like putting up the local laws, that was, you know, a couple hours in the week, getting the FOI form together, I know, that was a couple hours. To do the redo the website, I just I need a couple like really solid days to do it, and based on all the projects, I just haven't had that time.
Does uh the superintendent Pat have a timeline in in mind?
I don't think yet, I think he's kinda looking to us for that, what do you think his timeline is to start this?
They're re- they're incorporating it into this year's budget.
Into.
They're work- they're working on their budget now, their budget. Year is uh what's it, December?
Uh July one, and ours is June one, so we're just moving off.
I'm sold. They're working on their budget now, it should incorporate.
Okay.
There have been a couple of things that have been thrown for physicians or people that we need thrown around. Is this one, there's more help for code enforcement, there's um what Kevin just said with economic development. And we've got, plus we've got our budget coming up, so maybe we need to look at what our budget looks like. I mean, they're all great, I mean, you know, if I had the money, I'd give it to you.
Yes. No, I guess.
But I think we need to look at the whole picture before we decide on which and what we can and will do.
Yeah, I agree with that, I also think, I know we said one or two years, but once they hire an employee, it's not short term, you're portioned, and I suppose.
Yeah.
Yeah, how long are we on?
Yeah, we only need it for a year and then one.
Yeah.
And also, we're are we partying to the salary negotiations, right?
Right.
But I.
Yeah, and then if there's controversy with the town or the school, are we talking to it, cause it's the same, yeah, I I think
Who's your board?
Take some discussion, I I'm open to it, but I agree.
Yeah, I think it's a good discussion, I think it I think it sounds good, but let's.
Maybe a power.
We have to.
Pow wow with all three parties.
So I could occasionally if I asked him to do me a number of people.
Yeah.
So if we're what, if we're only like, let's just say hypothetically, if we should look at the budget, I agree with that a hundred percent too.
Mm-hmm.
But if we are only saying, okay, well, we'll have this person for one, two years, I mean, they're probably looking more long-term.
Well, I'm sure the person getting hired is looking more.
Are they?
Well, of cour- of course.
I think we're only gonna be able to justify it for a year, maybe two, because of just the amount of web stuff that has to happen, and and frankly, there's so many
Okay.
water documents that would, it would be great to have all of them up there, like there's so many.
Right.
Well, but then the question is, is it is it more advantageous to go out and pay somebody ten thousand dollars you have control over?
Right.
Because there is a commitment, they're hiring somebody.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it sounds like it would be a nice idea, it probably would only last a year, maybe two, but it also is budget dependent, and we have to see how everything else follows up.
The only the only thing is that if, you know, there's a a big thing going on at the school, and a big thing in the town, and a big thing the village, and sometimes they all come together at the same time.
Well, it takes priorities.
So what's the priority?
Yeah, exactly.
Who signs the paycheck is the priority.
Right, that's right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying in concept, I feel like they would they would make it work. Um the the current climate there, um they're they're pretty easygoing and and willing to work with folks.
I I think.
But but then again, it is a school, that's not always always the case.
It's not, but that's not what I'm trying to say, I'm sure that's, I mean, Pat's Pat's terrific that way, but always, but um and you don't know, something, but it would happen.
Yeah.
So.
I think we should probably get a three-way pow wow together on that.
Sure.
Um I I would vol- I would volunteer, I don't know what, how how it would work for you, since you.
In in all honesty, I am fine to be going back and forth, but if you guys have pow, I don't wanna be there, cause I'm a teacher at the school.
Right, so.
I don't wanna be there, I think it should be other people.
You wanna be the one to tell the big big boss?
Well, no, it's just, I mean, like, that is a very, like, as a school teacher, we have to do conflict um
No, but it's.
No.
documents, and I have to explain that I'm also the mayor, so if something comes up, it's it.
Right. I'd volunteer to do it if you need some.
Right.
I'd be willing to work with you, act on those agreements.
So so what happens if if we do, uh we do, we sign, we agree to it, and then like you said, after a year or two, we don't need it anymore?
Alright.
This is what.
How do we, how do we get out of this commitment?
That would be built into the shared service agreement.
Yeah, that had to be in the agreement.
Right.
What we would probably do is we'd probably commit to a year or two.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, right.
Town supervisor, do you have any idea how long the town has been thinking about, like, how this would work if they were in on it? And if you don't know or don't wanna speak for the board, that's that's fine.
I didn't think about it timeframe, I thought I was thinking more long long term, because going back, this is me speaking, going back to um even when Huzik Rising first started, there was discussion early on about having uh a central location to
Yep.
to a hub.
I remember that.
A hub to store all our websites. Where somebody is taking charge of that, has all those websites interconnected, and so that uh if you go to one, it's easy to get to the next, and you know, and every, the announcements are there.
Community calendar was one of those discussion points, yep.
Community calendar is part of it, so and and having one place for the community calendar.
We don't have a newspaper anymore anyway, so.
So there was, there was, so when Pat suggested it, you know, I, I thought this is, this is a good way to get, so at least it's a start.
Yeah. And that hub helps people understand the difference between Huzik and Huzik Falls, and it's Huzik would have a C, Huzik have a K, and
Thank you. Oh my gosh.
Hey, which court am I supposed to go to, where is that, who is, wait, they're the same jo- wait, what, you know, like, there's all this Huzik confusion, and that hub was
No, no, that's not the one, Rob, it's people asking what we're doing about the solar stuff, like
Supposed to be the answer.
Right.
Wrong place.
That's like the only question I get.
Yeah, I don't know if a hub solves that problem or confuses it more, we all know it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a great concept, I think it needs to be forced out more, cause I think we need to look at money.
Okay.
We do not solar.
I'm gonna give Pat your emails and contact Dan and 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 Doug, and I'll let you guys pursue that, but I'm gonna communicate to him this is something that we like in principle, we have to see if it fits within our budget, which we'll know more before they will. And um.
They'd have to fine tune more before they can make an agreement, yes.
And yes, yes.
Is that another another solution to it, would be they don't hire an employee
Well, yeah.
together, the three of us hire an outside firm. And then the identity is that firm, not I'm a school district employee talking to the press, I mean, that's you outsourcing.
That could also work.
That's easier to manage in terms of.
An independent contractor is also cheaper.
Hmm.
Yeah.
An independent contractor would be cheaper for the school from a standpoint of you don't pay the benefits.
Yeah.
You're not paying benefits, right, yeah.
But then it's independent that way, and we just all use the same firm, it's not that weird.
Not like a mixed benefit, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Get a a volume discount basic.
Yeah, yeah, you're doing a consortium.
Perhaps you might find somebody local that's that can do that job, where the school might hire somebody from Flifton Park or Saratoga or somewhere.
The webmaster or something.
Yep, 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 alright, I'll pass that on, um Kevin, you, uh discussion regarding implementation, some of the parking study ideas, including the possibility of removing overnight parking signs from the village parking lot? Is there anything you wanted to throw out there?
No, I was talking to Elena about the New York State Department of Transportation codes. It we, whether we can apply their um laws to what we do in the village, whether it's transferable, or whether covers the village or not.
So typically, state law it applies to the village, absent the village having a local law in effect that's more restrictive. So the village can be more restrictive, not less restrictive when it comes to the state law, but as long as there's a state law in effect that covers that, it would apply to the village.
So the state law's a minimum.
Yeah.
Right.
It's pretty, it's pretty thorough though, if you look at the the state code. Um I think things like Kenny talked about, like setbacks from the uh from intersections, which.
What you're talking about curb cuts?
Uh no, just setbacks of cars.
Of for parking, okay.
And stuff like that, that's in the state code, so we could just adopt that, we wouldn't have to make our own local laws in that case, we could just follow the state laws.
Which we should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should.
I, yeah, I think that's more about messaging to people that this is the law, we have to enforce it, so a notice is coming.
Well, you either have to you either have to put signs up, or you have to uh
Lines.
yellow.
You could put no no parking here, the corner signs.
Yep.
Um I I don't, I'm not sure what the setback, is it twenty five feet?
I think that those are the parking, so is it right twenty five feet?
Twenty five feet, yeah.
I think the the only thing I would add to that from my Kevin's discussion is the state law applies um for purposes of like actually issuing tickets, if it's in the local law, then and it's cited to as a violation of the local law, then the village gets
The money.
Right.
I like that.
The revenue, yeah.
So we just have to take the state laws and put them, make them our laws.
It already is, it already is.
We could do that.
It already, we went over this, it's already there.
With respect to like the twenty five feet from the intersection, that kind of stuff?
All VNT laws.
So like the, yes.
We can.
Like the, one of the main focus areas.
Remember we went over that, because of the parking, it is already in the local law.
Yeah.
So in a situation where someone is parked within the inside the twenty five foot setback, and you guys take it back, how does that come to us and out of state?
Because it's on.
Cause they take it, they do it, they cite it as a violation of the local law.
And it's addressed on the new ticket.
Where is that?
And that's on the new tickets, right.
So state laws are automatically local laws?
No, no, we have to, we have to, we have, we can enforce them, the money is.
I think we could have it found and addressed there.
For them.
We just adopt.
It's already adopted, they found it, and they added it to the new tickets.
So what?
Right.
Which, is it just parking, that there's a there's a local ordinance, cause I don't, I just don't remember. Or is that a why?
We just like the parking, we just like the parking.
But we could go further for other things, if we want to like.
We need to go further for.
You should still.
Yes.
Cause some municipalities are doing like, you know, the red light cameras and different things, where they implement a local law citing almost to V, like to VNT actual violations, that now instead of going to the state, will come to the municipalities.
Yeah.
So that's that's the benefit of having it in the code, in the local law code.
I mean, it would remedy two of the areas, especially up by uh Main Street and Church Street, and also remedy the uh Willard Street.
Fill my stewards.
Because cars are parked right in the middle of it, and even if you back out of Stewart's, you can't see up Church Street. So that is, that remedy that without.
That's.
There might be, it might be beneficial to get signs though, if there's like.
Then. That would, yeah.
Yeah.
That remedy that without, you know, making new local laws.
Are you talking Kevin, by the by the point?
No, by the stewards.
On the point, too.
No, right, no.
Well, no, also the point, you're right.
Right.
Because you can't legally, I don't think in the transportation law, you can't park within that intersection.
Right, so how do we?
Transportational or vehicle traffic law?
Vehicle traffic law.
Okay, transportational and vehicle traffic law, totally different. And vehicle, and state code are totally different, so we gotta figure out which one we're gonna do.
Well, I think we need to take a look at the local law.
And you have a local law, because you may be able to park on that side of the street, on Church Street.
Yes.
Because you're not near the intersection. The intersection is on the opposite side of the road, in front of Neil's inbox.
Oh, that's there, what about the by the point, I'm more concerned with the point.
If they're on the, if they're on the other side, that may be a mute point, they're not on, they're not within twenty five feet of that intersection.
John, I'm gonna be in touch with you about getting that local law that you guys found, and we'll start developing this idea further, cause it sounds like
That makes sense.
What's that?
We have, we have to.
The parking law, what was that?
This is something like.
Oh, parking law, no, it wasn't that old.
It wasn't old?
This is a detail one we're gonna have to hash out, but we can do the the work in email and over time and get ready for it.
Yeah, I look up my, I I actually.
Sound like this, sound like this.
Oh, well, I left my notes in my house.
But doesn't seem like you have to create a local law for every.
No, it sounds like.
No, in order to, okay, so in order to there's two different ways to do this. And correct me if I'm wrong, so what happens now, if somebody comes to court? And say they come in with a eleven ten A.
Which is what?
Vehicle and traffic law.
Disobeying a traffic control device, so.
Red light.
What happens is, no, that's a different traffic.
So what's a traffic control device, stop sign?
Any traffic control device.
You mean like stop sign?
So it's just a generic.
Yeah.
So a stop sign, a stop line?
It's usually what, like, if you're getting charged for something higher, it's usually what it gets reduced, telling that what it gets cited.
That's what it is.
What's that?
Yeah.
It's like parking on a pavement.
I'm just throwing you out there.
Kind of, but it's two points.
Yeah. So say they have that. And they come to court, what I do is I look at it and I go, well, explain to me your ticket, and I'll do a plea deal down to twelve oh three.
Who's those signs go to us?
Twelve oh one goes to the state and us, twelve oh three stays to us.
Okay.
Well, I don't think.
I know this.
I don't think you're talking about the same.
What Kevin's saying is, we're trying to decide if we can establish a new parking zone right here, and he's saying we don't need a local law for it, it's already on the books.
But.
It's already on the books.
That's what, that's what Kevin's talking about.
Yeah, it's in the vehicle and traffic, we can enforce it.
And that's what we need to see, so that we can properly sign it and properly set it up, and tell people that it's coming, that's what we have to do.
We have to make sure that it's correct, because like Willard and Church, nobody's parked there, so they're not within twenty five feet of the intersection.
Well, they parked at the house right in the middle of here.
That's on the opposite side of the roadway.
What do you mean?
But in the transportation code, or I don't know if it's the same as what you're talking about. The setback from a curb cut is twenty five feet. And those cars are parking within that twenty five feet.
So every single driveway, you're gonna have no parking in the entire second ward.
Well, that's what, that's the problem with uh parking on Church Street everywhere.
So you can't enforce it on Church Street, and you're not gonna do it in second ward.
They 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 need to do something, because there's.
Can't we exempt?
Can we?
Oh shoot, what, just close it?
So can we do that?
I think, I mean, I think.
This is something we need to, we need to figure out, because it's a big deal, but.
Yeah, we need to probably look at what we have, and kinda compare all three, and see where to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we spent the money on the parking study.
One of the many reasons why, yes.
Uh one of the things is we're in parking, um if we wanted to make uh John Street parking, like between Main and Church, just, it's been two hours
Okay.
in the past, now it's, you know, whenever, however long, whatever, it was just, because nobody, they don't, there's no.
So you're saying it's not enforced?
Correct. So, um if we decided we wanted to enforce it, A, but also if, there's no reason on, let me go, bleh, there's no reason that it should be it, that section of John Street needs to be more than one hour parking. Nobody goes into any, any of those places more than an hour.
What if I take two hours in your store?
Hmm?
What if I take two hours in your store?
Yeah, that's why, what we're talking.
Nobody sits in the store two hours.
Yeah, what if I did a stop that?
Uh that is a local law change to address parking.
I don't know, that, if it's on a state highway, we don't have to say on. There are there are laws, dude. We can't change.
So parking usually.
Yeah.
Because first, nobody needs it for two hours, and also something has to happen, because there are three, three people who own businesses on that street, who parked there all day long.
That's an enforcement issue, and you just.
The tickets haven't come in yet.
And that's a two-hour issue.
You need to, you need to.
Uh no, but this is one too, but it's no reason.
It needs to be reported, so they can be enforced.
Maybe we can.
Deb, we're defibrillating you, you're gonna do it.
That's gonna stick it.
There we go.
Listen, I I used to call, but there's, unless you see it from when they park it from when they don't.
Alright, is there anything else, or can we move to executive session?
We can move to executive session.
I am looking for a motion to enter executive session to discuss personal matters with no business to be conducted at the conclusion of the executive session.
Motion.
Dan and Doug, further discussion on that?
I'd like to debate parking tickets.
On, on favor? Aye, opposed or abstentions?
Let's talk more about parking tickets.
Carries, we are moving into executive session at nine ten PM.